Are here for the town council committee of the whole meeting. It is six thirty-three. Councillors present. Bordelain, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Obray and Parker, as well as Granatowski. Councillor Zepary is absent. So we have a quorum with eight councillors. And calendar and communications. And I'm going to start us off tonight because there are a couple of things I want to to mention briefly. One is a message I'm conveying on behalf of the town clerk. I happened to stop by town hall today and the clerk's office is very, very busy dealing with the absentee ballots and she just asked that I convey a request for continued patience from the public as they are swamped. And they are doing the best they can. They're staffed and working as diligently as possible. However, what they are finding and they're finding this with their clerks across the state, the system that they must tie into at the secretary of the state's office. Just because of the sheer volume is slowing down. So what normally would take them five minutes to do is taking them much longer now. So they ask the public for their patience and know that they are doing their best to keep up with the processes and fulfill your ability to be able to vote. So that's a message from the clerk's office. Thank you very much. While I have the floor, I'll continue on. I was asked by Mr. Morrison, the superintendent golf course to complete an Audubon recertification for Shenacosa Golf Course. And I was pleased to take care of that. It included a visit to the golf course and filling out some survey, some paperwork and submitting photographs. So I took care of that. I had a meeting at the request of the chair of the resilience and sustainability task force, Mr. Stever, along with former state rep Jesse Stratton. And they asked to come before us. And I think we're looking at December, Mr. Bird. Is that what we're trying to figure out? First cow in December perhaps?
Yes, there's only one cow in December.
Oh, that's right. So tentatively, the resilience and sustainability task force would like to meet with the full council. And so we're looking at that time. I had the pleasure of attending the meeting at Colonel Ledgerd School where the potential preferred developer rolled out his ideas, his concept plans for that particular building and the reuse of that particular building. I wanted to let you know that tomorrow evening is the next meeting of Groton's Long Term Recovery Committee. And that is a virtual meeting at 5:30 and I'm sure there'll be much to talk about. If anyone is interested in attending, please contact the manager's office. The link is on the town web website and you can have the access to attend the Zoom meeting and listen in. And I'm not sure if that is a recorded meeting or not, Mr. Bird. Do you recall?
I think we're recording it just to have it. I don't think we've been airing them.
Okay.
Well, maybe, maybe not on TV anyways. I'd have to double check if we're doing it otherwise.
All right, very good. So if you'd like to attend, please contact the manager's office for the link to attend. And the other thing is we have tonight, we'll have an update from Chairman Obray and her committee councillor Baumgartner and councillor Parker as to the progress on the rules. And that will be under other business as per our town attorney's guidance. And that's all I have for communications. I know that was quite a bit and I apologize, but there was a lot going on. So thank you for your patience with that. And with that, we'll start around the table. Councillor Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have nothing to report other than just like to align my remarks with your, with yours, Madam Mayor regarding the absentee ballot counting done by our clerk's office. I just want to give my hats to, you know, the entire clerk's office for their work. I know it's they're the busiest time of their, their year, especially now given, you know, the surge in absentee ballot voting because of the pandemic. But just a friendly reminder, reminder to folks that, you know, if you want to ensure that your ballot is counted, you know, be sure to either drop it off at the, one of the designated ballot drop-off boxes in front of town hall. That way you don't risk any issues with the ballot being mailed after the election day or any other issues. So with that, I have nothing further, but it's good to see everyone.
Thank you, Councillor Baumgartner. I know Councillor Zepary is now with us, so we have nine councillors. Thank you, Councillor Zepary. We are on to councillor Parker, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I also attended that Colonel Ledgerd present, school presentation. I attended the TVCCA meeting and I will update the council via email of the progress with TVCCA and the board members. And I'd like to, if it's possible, make an announcement for Safe Futures, if that's, if I may.
Yes, please, go ahead.
They are doing a virtual candle, purple candle in support of domestic violence victims or anyone who has had that happen to them tomorrow evening, starting at 6:00 PM. And they're also doing a live Facebook event. So I was hoping to get that out to the public to support those who have been victimized by this. And thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker. And we had an email, Mr. Bird will be discussing that later, something to do with safer futures as well. Councillor Franco, please.
Thank you. I'm currently in Florida, so I haven't been able to do too much up in Connecticut. During communications, I do have a question regarding next Tuesday, which I believe would be a town council meeting. And will be, we'd be having that meeting as it's election day?
Not on Tuesday. It's been moved to Wednesday and I think it's always included when we vote the schedule in December. We always have it.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. And we did receive notice that more residents in Groton have passed away to COVID. I sent, I send my sincere condolences. And I want to ask all of our residents in Groton to please do whatever you can, stay safe, stay healthy, follow the guidelines, follow what the CDC is telling us, and let's try and get our numbers down low. I had read that they believe Connecticut will probably be peaking in January with our COVID numbers. And it seems like our side of the state is being hit pretty hard right now. So I'm just asking everybody to please do your part and try and keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Heed, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to let the council know about a very exciting project that's, that's starting. Eugenia Valagro from Groton Conservation Advocates and Sue Sutherland from GOSA have initiated a process with the town staff, including John Burke, to get trails in to the King property. Which is something, you know, we had talked about a couple of years ago, so it's starting to happen. So the three of us took a walk around the property and it's really beautiful. There's a lot of like really large trees. There's ash trees, ash groves. A lot of really neat stuff. And so we had a preliminary meeting to set up the committee that would organize the process of designing trails, blazing trails, raising volunteers, raising raising funds, two things. You know, clean up the property, all of that. So that happened this past week and it seems like we're, we're going to get started with two meetings a month until we get everything off the ground. But I just wanted to let you know, it's really exciting. This could do a lot of things, not only just open the property to trails, but also interlink it to other trails and other corners of other areas that we want to link together. So very exciting news, I think.
Thank you. That is good news for the town and for the city. Nice, nice project there. Councillor Bordelain, please.
Hello, thank you. I just wanted to say hello and I did attend the Groton Long Point Bridge Task Force Working Group. It was mentioned at the meeting that typically these meetings aren't televised, but I believe just the sheer information that's going to come out of that, I think it, if I'm saying it correctly, John, that the consensus was to record them so we could use that information and get it out there.
And it is on our website.
Perfect. So it's, you know, normally the group, they're not always televised, but this one will be. And so I think that's great. I encourage everybody to get involved and stay up to date on the information. It looks like they're going to update the old website that was functioning when this first became to be, when they started researching this back many years ago. So a lot of information coming out. A lot to do with the same proposals that had come out last summer, looking at those three diagrams and, you know, just basically the meeting was just, you know, letting everybody kind of revisit the thought of the bridge and looking at the the diagrams and how we're going to move forward and the deadlines that we would have to meet to kind of get things going. So but once again, it will be televised and it's, you know, going to be up on the town's website as well as the bridge Groton Long Point Bridge website will be up and running and possibly, you know, revised to meet, you know, what's going on now. I just also wanted to say I share the same concerns as councillor Franco with COVID. You know, working in a medical facility as I'm sitting here still in my own uniform myself. And, you know, living in Groton and working in a hotspot in New London. You know, it's definitely a concern. I'm seeing it. You know, it, you know, we really have to think of like what our next plans are. I'm excited for the meeting tomorrow to really look at where do we, you know, fair as a town with the different levels and accessibility and different things that, you know, we might really need to start looking at as things start to ramp up here. So I just encourage everyone to stay informed and stay alert and be involved on the current situations that are going on. Thank you.
And my apologies to councillor Obray. I skipped you. Councillor Obray, you have the floor, ma'am.
Not a problem. Can't imagine that happened. I attended the, I believe it's pronounced the SCARA meeting. And from that meeting, I'm going to request a meeting with our manager and our mayor. So I can discuss some of the aspects of it. Be sure I understand it correctly. And then if I do, I'll come in with the mayor's permission to do a full report. And that's about all. Except I will share, I know it's not really pertinent, but if you're having a bad day up in Washington Park, they got a bunch of exercise things that are out there. Honestly, I got myself sick doing them all today. So go give it a try. It's really lifting.
Very good. That's a good tip, the park horse, I think.
Madam Mayor, I had one more thing to add. If I can just add it now or do it after, it's your, your choice.
Certainly. Councillor Obray, were you finished?
I am now.
Councillor Bordelain, go ahead before we go on to the other two councillors.
Sure. I just also had a question. I know some towns are doing weekend shifts for the clerk's office. I know that was discussed that we aren't having a high numbers in there. Is there any push or need to have hours available for the weekend? And if so, when will that be?
The clerk told me that she is working Saturday. Mr. Bird, I'm not sure if Sunday is a possibility, but she did definitely say there were their Saturdays. They have been, I think, for the past Saturdays.
Perfect.
That's my understanding.
Okay, I just wanted to put that on the, you know, for people to know, because that's another important piece to that. So thank you.
Thank you for reminding me to talk about that. So we have councillor Melendez next, please.
Hi, I have nothing to report, just
Thank you. And councillors of Perry.
I'll report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bird, do you have any communications?
Did you want me to mention the Safe Futures, sorry, State Futures at this time?
Yes, please. That would be great. Thank you.
This came through, well, both through First Selectman Cheesebro, but to the COG. Safe, it's about concerning safe futures. They've seen an eight hundred and thirty percent increase in costs since the summer. In addition to seeing an increase in cases, COVID-19 safety measures lessened their physical housing capacity requiring hotel stays and have resulted in unexpected expenses. What they're trying, so their fundraising goal for the year was fifty thousand. They've only raised forty-three thousand. What they're trying to do is get at least fourteen towns of the twenty-two in the COG to contribute a, an additional five hundred dollars. So that is the request and I am supportive of that.
Thank you.
Elsewise, sorry, I got a couple more items. I'll go on. Of course, we know a couple of weeks ago, our recycling ordinance went into play into effect. We've had our first complaint and so we'll be working our way through that. Tanglewood Park, I mentioned last time that I asked the Parks and Rec Commission to look at whether it would be appropriate to open that back up to small boat launch, for the boat launch there. It's been closed since around 2008, 2009. They agreed it should be open, so we've got some work to do. There's signage, taking bollards out, but in the spring it'll be open back up to the public for that part. That, that came out of a request from some of the neighbors. Our website hopefully will be up, our new town website, hopefully next week will be up. If not, then shortly thereafter. Colonel Ledgerd, you mentioned going to that presentation that is on the town website and GMTV on YouTube, so you can see that actual presentation if you missed it. Mystic paving is wrapped up by Public Works for the year. We had an email today thanking everybody for Overlook Avenue and how nice it came out. And then it moved on to paving Groton Ambulance, as well as those two basketball courts that were approved in the CIP, the Tanglewood and Deerfield. So those are getting underway also. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. So then the, the Safe Futures item, we are looking at putting that up for consideration in November at a cow. That'll be an item that we'll discuss in November.
Unless you wanted to, the only other thing you could do is unless you wanted to waive the cow requirement and take a right to council next week, but that would be unusual.
Okay. All right. So
You could, oh, sorry, but the other option is on the night of the cow, if you thought you were going to do it, you could add a special council meeting to quickly approve it and two to get it going. And it's of such a small amount, it doesn't have to go through the RTM, so it could be very quick.
Right, okay. All right. So we can, we can discuss that when we meet on Wednesday and figure out where it will fit in well on the agenda. And we could figure out the timeline and how quickly they need the, the commitment from, from each town. All right, very good. So we're on to item four, approval of minutes. Councillor Baumgartner, please.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October thirteenth, twenty twenty, so moved.
Obray, was it seconded by Obray?
Yes.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Obray to approve the committee, the whole minutes of October thirteenth. And the minute started on page two of your packet. Councillor Franco.
On the minutes, it, trying to find the right page. Hold on one second. There was listed under other business. A notation that Mayor Granatowski mentioned that she would make a referral in that portion. But that did not happen. And the minutes are supposed, are supposed to reflect what actually did happen. So I'd request that that would be removed. And in that, at the very end of the rules, it states discussion only, no action taken, that it also notates that we adjourned during this, during this motion.
Any other comments? I actually did make a referral. I said I was going to be making, I'd be sending out information to the council requesting a referral and I actually did do that. So I believe that is, I believe that's correct, what's listed there under item seven. Anything else? Councillor Franco.
We actually adjourned during the rules. We didn't go on to other business and we never went to review of agenda items either. So we did not even go that far into our agenda.
We'll take a look at that. I assume Ms. Hilton can take a look at the timing of that and adjust correctly. Any other comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the minutes of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven, one, seven. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Parker.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Parker. Thank you. We are on to new business. We are on item five A. And I would, this is item twenty twenty-six seventy-three North Stonington Bridge. This begins on page sixteen in your packets. And I just wanted to introduce our guest this evening. First, thank you very much for Selectman Cheesebro for coming out tonight and joining us, accepting our invitation to attend our town council meeting. We appreciate that very much. We also have with us Mr. O'Brien, who is the finance board chair, I believe.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you. And just by way of background for the public, we have had a CIP in our budget for several years now, dealing with the North Stonington Road Bridge, which connects Groton to Stonington. And during the last budget cycle, council expressed the desire to have a meeting with the First Selectman and her team to discuss this item. And so Mr. Bird reached out and First Selectman Cheesebro was kind enough to join us this evening. So thank you for coming out. And I'm not sure if Mr. Bird, you wanted to say something first to get the discussion going, or do we want to yield to the First Selectman to see if she has comments?
I think it pretty well says it in the agenda item sheet there that our, of course, there's a 1.2 million approximate of project. We have a grant for about fifty percent of that. And then the other six hundred thousand. The way it actually works is we'd be, the town of Groton would be responsible for roughly fifty-eight percent of the cost and the town of Stonington, forty-two percent of the cost. The only real other option, I pulled back out today, a legal opinion from March. The only other thing you can really do is you can do a long-term agreement where we fund it upfront and they pay it back. But other than that, it's pretty well set. It's not exactly fifty-eight percent. It's based on the average three years revenues for each town portion, that type of thing, but it'd be approximately fifty-eight percent for Groton. And as we know, times are tough in Stonington. We were looking at possibly funding it this year and Stonington was unable to. So we're just trying to figure out if there's any way to come to an agreement for next year.
And First Selectman Cheesebro, did you wish to address this at all, or are you here just to kind of take questions? It's your, your choice what you would like to do since you're our guest. Thank you.
No, thank you all so much for having us. And I feel like we should do this more often. It's been really insightful hearing how you guys run your meetings and what you have working. I've been taking some notes on some things to copy, hopefully in Stonington. I'll leave some time because I want Tim, as our board of finance chair, to really be able to speak to this, but maybe just to give you guys an update of where we are since we last talked. We've brought on a consultant to help us basically do a bridge inventory on our side in Stonington. We hadn't even really done a review of all the bridges we have. So, so far we've gone to the point where we now know we have eighteen bridges we're responsible for. We're hoping by the early December, this, our new town engineer will be able to go in front of our board of finance to give a very basic update of what this consultant is looking at, the scope, the, the work and the goal is by February to have most of this work completed. Again, it's pretty preliminary, but the idea was that we needed to have better education on our side to see what is the state of kind of repair or disrepair of many of our bridges and are some of them good for the next fifteen, twenty years, or are some going to come up with needed repairs in the next few years? So we could just make a more educated, I think, decision around this. I think as you guys might know, it was this shared bridge as well as one with Ledgerd that came up last year. So there was a number, and then we have our, another bridge that's just kind of on, in, just in Stonington proper. And none of them got any funding for, for various reasons, COVID not being the least of it. But we, we are hopefully looking forward to having more frequent conversations. We know this year is likely a lot of uncertainty still around COVID and unemployment and where things stand. But I'll leave some time now for, for Tim and then also happy to take any questions on our side.
Thank you.
Thanks Danielle, thanks to the Groton Town Council for starting this discussion with us prior to budget season. It seems to have come up over the last eleven, eleven years with us and I was on a Zoom meeting today with Treasure Wooden from the state of Connecticut, looking at what funding opportunities were available this year. What the COVID outlook kind of looks like, or the current thinking for the next fiscal year. And what, where they thought kind of just, you know, trying to read the tea leaves was going. And I think that in the town of Stonington, I mean, we, you all started the meeting talking about the tragedies that you're facing in Groton with, with people passing away from the, from the COVID disease. I think that in Stonington, we're, we're watching kind of the red wave come around southeastern Connecticut and getting very nervous about what's going on there and how that may affect our our, our tax basis and, and really more so our taxpayers. And I think that we're going to be in a very conservative mindset going into the next fiscal year. Given all of the inputs that we are getting right now, that's not to say that conditions might change. I hope they do for the better. But I think that being realistic going into our budget cycle, it's going to be another tough budget cycle of trying to manage costs and keep them as low as we can. And, you know, the, the mayor or the First Selectman of East Lime was on the call on the Zoom meeting and they're, they're a million dollars over budget for their Board of Ed right now, six months in. We're seeing increased costs in Stonington that we haven't even really started to get a handle on in terms of our, our electrical rates, our utility rates are skyrocketing compared to what was budgeted. And I think we're going to face a lot of budget pressures this, finishing this fiscal going into next year. So that was a very long-winded way, and I apologize for that, of saying that I, I'm not sure this next fiscal, we're going to have money available for this project. But we, we would from our side, recommend for us, I would be in favor of us leaving a dollar in the, in the SIP budget that we may be able to, if, if things improve to a way that we're hopeful for. We can take a look at it, but I don't see at the current time the, the fiscal realities that we'll be able to, to look at this project next year, given the uncertainties we're all facing.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I just wanted to clarify something that the First Selectman had said. You have a consultant that you have working with you on your infrastructure and you're expecting a report in February? Is that, did I hear that correct?
Yep, we're trying to see how quickly they can put it out so it's ready for when we start our budget meetings. In either in January, seems a little tight, so likely for February.
So then you would know.
I'm happy to share that. Yeah, and I'm happy to share that with you as well as with, with John as progress happens. Because they'll, they'll likely do it in some incremental stages.
Okay. So you're, you're looking, your goal is to have that information from your engineers before you start your budget?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from your team, First Selectman, that you wish to speak before I throw it open for council questions?
No, throw it, throw it open.
Okay, very good. Councillor Bordelain, you have the floor.
Thank you. First off, I just wanted to thank First Selectwoman for coming out.
Thank you. First off, I just wanted to thank First Selectwoman for coming out. It's great to have you here. And it wasn't that long ago, I remember going, you know, it seems not that long ago when you just were sworn in and it was awesome to be a part of that. So welcome, welcome to Groton and it's great to work with you. I guess, you're welcome. I, I guess the question, I guess there's always a lot of rumors that go around regarding, you know, these things. And, you know, this year, when we were tasked with the idea of, you know, do we fund it or not, a lot of people said, and I guess, you know, the question is, the bridge for Stonington is not off the radar completely for you guys, is not ever funding it. Is that appropriate to say? Or what is, you know, as you said tonight, you know, it doesn't look as if possibly in this budget season due to, you know, budget restraints. You also have a study going on on bridges in general. I guess, you know, the part that we funded this year where the beams had to come down no matter, and that was my direction of voting and the way that I had voted for that, was to clean it up and put up a fence. And the beams had to come down if we replaced it or we didn't replacement. So it made me think that it was moving the ball in the right direction to make it A, safer, and B, basically, it would have to be removed for replacement. But a lot of folks, you know, I'm hearing are saying, oh, nope, Stonington is not ever going to fix that bridge. They're planning to close the other side. And I guess, you know, it would be just, you know, helpful to hear that that's not, or is that really? Or is it still kind of, you know, on the table to look at? That's my first question.
Yeah, no, happy to. And Tim can come in more as the Chair of the Board of Finance. But maybe two things to say is actually you guys did a really great job prompting us. You cleaned up kind of the middle and your side. So we, I'm sure this is maybe where some rumors start. But we went down there with our Public Works and dug out. We met with the neighbors on the Stonington side who obviously now 10 plus years have been living with a construction site. So we met with them and we dug out some of the concrete and added some dirt. We worked with our tree wardens and they picked out a few different kind of plantings just to make it look nicer. But we spoke with Chief Richards of the Fire Chief and let him know, you know, we were specifically picking things that could be moved and eventually like kind of line the side of the drive, which the town owns that portion there. So, you know, this was definitely not done. We specifically didn't pick things that would be hard to move or challenging and kept it pretty inexpensive, just a couple hundred dollars. So that way, we didn't want this to be seen as a permanent move. But we did want to clean it up for the neighbors. And similarly, we're going to move those Jersey barriers and put up some wood, kind of like scenic, they use on scenic roads, like that kind of wood fencing, just to make it look nicer. But again, I, you know, I think every year the budget changes so much. I think we haven't wanted to make any promises and maybe that comes across as saying this will never happen. I think we shouldn't say never. We were not sure what will happen in the future. But Tim could maybe speak a little bit more to the Board of Finance's point of view.
Sure. So from the, from the Board of Finance standpoint, of the last 10 years, we funded the bridge 100% on Stonington's side, nine of, nine of the 10 years. I think that there was a hope that it would work. And after the 10 years, we did do exactly what Danielle said was to put in, we're putting in some plantings to make it look nicer and more aesthetically pleasing. Jersey barriers get kind of tired for homeowners to look at year after year. And that was why I said earlier that we would put it in as a dollar in our SIP fund. So it keeps the line alive. At this point, I don't think anyone on the Stonington side, I can only speak for the Board of Finance, so would totally shut down the project and say, no, we're not going to do it. But I also don't think it's a, it's a priority, given the COVID environment that we're in right now.
Thank you. Thank you for those answers. My last question is roughly, and if you don't have any funny, what was the last year that you guys put the full funding forward?
I think it was two years ago because I was on the Board of Finance still. And I remember we had a discussion that we, and Tim can correct me, but we had a good bit in our reserve fund. And so we were looking to kind of spend that down a bit. And I believe we had spoken with the then First Selectman of the, at the time, Rob Simmons, to kind of indicate that, you know, this might be the last year that we had this reserve funding, which was also part of that conversation that I think happened a bit in the last budget cycle, that we had spent down our reserve. And it was going to take a little bit more time now to start building that back up again. So I think the years that we had and were able to fund it, we had a much larger reserve in our fund balance than we do now even before COVID.
Well, thank you. I thank you for answering those questions. And I think for me at least, you know, you know, I only can speak for myself, being only my first term or halfway through my first term on here. So it, it's nice to have you guys here to actually talk about it with you. And I do appreciate that. And it definitely answers some questions that I think people wanted to hear. And, you know, definitely takes, you know, changes the tone that it's, there's no permanent fix on any side, that this is an ever-moving part. So thank you.
Counselor Franco was next, and then Zephar.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming over from Stonington and to our Zoom meeting. It's exciting that we're having one with our adjoining town. So my question, because I've been following this for the past, I've been, this is my second term, second term. And we've gone through numerous budgets. And even from the first budget on the Groton side, we were under the impression that Stonington had not funded it in their budget. Because usually you do your budget and determine things before we do. So we watch what you do and then we make our decisions based on that, I believe. So since I've been on for the last three years, I'm sort of under the impression that Stonington hadn't funded it. And so in a sense, I'm wondering, how did we get here to the point where it's been all these years and there's been, you know, discrepancies on who's funding it and when they're funding it? And how can we do a better job in the future? Because this is something that many people do want to see rebuilt. And I'm a proponent of liking to see this if it would work out between both of our towns. So how do you think going in the future, we can work this out? So it could both be on the same page?
So if the First Selectwoman doesn't mind, I'll take that one. The, I'm happy to share with either the mayor to pass on to the rest of you or to you all, our adopted budgets for the last five years, 10 years, whatever they are, that where we had funded the bridge replacement from the Stonington side. And then usually, through conversations through our First Selectman and through the mayor and the RTMs and the various groups from Groton, it, it didn't get prioritized afterwards. But I'm happy to share that back with you if that would help for historical context. And then how do we get better moving forward? I think that's a more important question, to be honest. And I think this is a first step. And this is an admirable first step and one that probably should have happened years ago. And I credit everyone from Groton, I credit Danielle for making this first step happen. That, that bridge for Stonington is, is obviously, the bridge got destroyed in the, in the floods back, you know, 11 years ago at this point. And that structurally hurt, hurt the bridge and hurt that. But it was a very limited use bridge even in those times. So while we had funded it, it's, it's not a high-traffic bridge by any means. And now with our bridge study, we're trying to take a look at, do we have other looming issues with other bridges in town? Because we don't have a really good handle on that from the Stonington side. But this is, this dialogue with us and Groton, where you have things that are, are shared resources, basically a bridge in this case, would help alleviate some of those confusion or concerns.
Thank you. May I ask very quickly, Mr. Burt, in the past budgets, while we were, you know, my first term and this term, how are we getting information from Stonington regarding the budget, their budget and their funding of this bridge?
Almost exclusively from the First Selectman.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Hey, Counselors, a Perry, please.
Just a couple of comments. One is there, one of the compelling interests in repairing the bridge or rebuilding the bridge is the fire company that's right there. And the Fire Chief has come to us and told us that there's a safety issue with getting his trucks to cover the entire zone that he has to with that bridge being out. They had used the bridge as a, as a routine prior to it's been damaged by the flood in 2009. So we, as you consider whether or not it's compelling, you ought to consider the safety concern of the fire company that's there. I, I think the idea of rebuilding the bridge this year is, from what you're telling us, is not going to happen. We, we should look at other things that we have a common interest in and see how we're doing at funding those. And one of the things I'm concerned about is the Mystic Noake Library. Will Stonington continue to fund Mystic Noake Library?
I can take the library one for sure, since Tim, Tim knows my affection for libraries. No, I think we can work through all your, your questions and comments. So one, just to say, we are in frequent conversation with Chief Richards and have immense respect for him and everything that they do. As I mentioned at the beginning of the call, we were also faced with a funding of a Ledgerd Bridge. And that actually has a 12-minute emergency services workaround, which, which was alarming to us. But again, due to budget considerations and cuts, we're, we're working with Ledgerd to try and find other potentially creative solutions such as weight limits or alternating or just using that bridge for emergency services to reduce the frequency. So we are, you know, it wasn't just the Groton Bridge that didn't get any funding. And again, this was, you know, pre-COVID, this was just budget consideration thing. And then COVID heightened everything. But to say, you know, we, we do want to work with, with them and we are very aware of that. And we've spoken with a number of the Groton residents who live on North Stonington Road and they've shared all of their concerns at length with us. So, you know, I think the Board of Finance will continue to engage. Tim and I are hopefully going to meet with Chief Richards before our budget cycle again to also talk with him more about that. But that was one piece. And then on the library side, again, I can't speak for the current Board of Finance, so Tim can jump in. But just so you know, we did work for two-plus years on the Board of Finance to come up with a funding allocation for the three libraries that we fund. And I'm hopeful that that allocation will stay put because there was a lot of work with all three libraries and members of the Board of Finance to get that set. So hopefully that same funding allocation will, will remain in place as, as we move forward in the, in the funding cycles.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll add, Counselor, is that in these times, we think the libraries probably need more funding, not less, as people are struggling with a lot of things that are going on and technology issues. So I don't think there's an appetite within Stonington to drop any funding for any library. However, I can't say that as a, as a given fact, but my impression and my instinct is that that funding is fairly intact.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Baumgartner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Madam First Selectwoman and Chairman O'Brien for coming to our Zoom meeting. Just like to, you know, concord with many of my colleagues in that, you know, much admiration for you both. And again, appreciate you coming on to the, you know, to, I should say, west of the river to join us this evening again. You know, as we were discussing during the budget season, you know, priorities for this upcoming fiscal year, we had given probably the issue of the North Stonington Bridge the most attention compared to many of the other items. And I think that was largely due to the fact that, you know, as the chief has articulated, it is an important linkage to, you know, it's important linkage for public safety apparatus to, you know, get to, to, you know, transact the brook there in a timely fashion. And unfortunately, that cannot happen because of, you know, the, the bridge has been in the shape it has for, for years now. So it is my hope that, you know, Groton and Stonington can come to the table and find, you know, common ground on a, on the funding plan. And my question is, is there any particular price point that would sort of make Stonington reconsider its position on, you know, in the short term, reconsider its position to perhaps fund, fund this item in their next fiscal year?
I'm going to give that one to Tim.
Yeah, I'll take that one. That's an excellent question. The unfortunate answer is probably that we went very conservative in Stonington this year with our budget for fiscal 2021. And I can't say until we really know the costs we're incurring for COVID and what we may have to do with school buildings, infrastructure and such for that, and the, and the gross impact that's going to have on taxes and mill rates. I can't, I can't answer your question, Counselor. But I think that it is not a top priority of Stonington right now. It's making sure the kids are safe and our, our, you know, our other infrastructure is safe and sound. And we underfunded things this year intentionally to try and be very conservative, worried about people's ability to pay their taxes. And I'm not sure that the next fiscal is going to be much easier for us. But we, there are some things we deferred that we're going to have to do for the town to keep things operational. So that was a long way of saying I don't know that there's a, a real number, given the uncertainties of COVID.
Mr. Burt wanted to speak. Mr. Burt?
Yeah, just to mention, I mentioned at the beginning of this session, I was looking back over the legal review. Statute's actually very clear that it has to be based on that apportioned amount. We can't do a different number other than we could, you can enter an agreement to fund it upfront with payback over time, but the total cost is apportioned. So there's, there's apparently no wiggle room on that.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. Any of the other counselors wish to ask any questions or offer any insight? Counselor Aubrey?
I also wanted to just thank you for coming over and talking with us. It'll make it a much better conversation when we're working on our taxes because there won't be any argument about it. We just can't do it this year as it would appear. Possibly the following year, we might be able to talk about it. Some of you will be able to talk about it. But thank you so much for the information because it will make things simpler for us to go forward. And we look forward to working with you on any items that might come up.
Thank you.
I'm looking to see if any other first-time counselors wish to speak before we go back for a second. So we have Counselor Heed, Melendez, and Parker who have not spoken yet. Do any of you three wish to have a turn?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Certainly. Counselor Melendez or Heed, did you wish to speak at this point? No? Counselor Melendez, no? So then we go back to Counselor Franco and then Bordelain.
Thank you. So we've been getting updates about parking in downtown Mystic and how this both affects both of our towns. How are things working out on your end? And do you have any other insight that you might be able to share with us?
Yeah, no, happy to. We actually, you hosted us again early, just a few days ago. So thank you. All the Johns on your side have been great to work with, John Burt, John Reiner. And then John Burke is also the consultant that we're working with. So there's three of them. But no, it's been, I think our first meeting was great. We had, you know, stakeholders, police presence, both economic development sides there. So I think it was a promising meeting. Our next step is to come up with almost principles for guiding our parking strategy. And so we have a few weeks to kind of come back with that. And then we're also lining up some stakeholder interviews. So John Burt and I have been, have been talking quite a bit. He's been very, very helpful and lovely to work with. So I think we will hopefully make progress. The consultant that, that you guys found- The consultant that, that you guys found seems fantastic. He's worked in so many great cities and towns all across the East Coast, a lot Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, Rhode Island. So I, I think we'll hopefully have some good things to share when he's done. And the final step, and John Burke can jump in here, but I believe the final step will be community kind of dialogue, which might be virtual, given everything, but they'll, will get feedback from the community at a key point in this process before they issue any final recommendations.
Okay, thank you. And let me just ask one more thing. So as I was jumping off of what I had asked before, um, how do we do better in the future? And I know that you'll send over budgets after, you know, your budgets to share with our town. But, um, do you think more of these type of meetings would be helpful to discuss that bridge after you get information? Should we have possibly schedule another one of these meetings?
I think we could, for the bridge, um, our, I can talk with John and kind of give a good timeline of things on our side. Actually tomorrow's our very first SIP meeting internally. And then, um, January will be our kind of first public meeting. So we can definitely share things along the process. But I think to your bigger point, um, these types of meetings or engagements would be, at least would be really useful. I mean, I think there's a lot that we can learn from each other. And you guys are leading on a lot of work in areas that, um, we haven't even really gotten started, quite honestly, on the Stonington side. So we definitely look to a lot of the work you're doing. So I think even just sharing of some of your practices and learning from each other, maybe having even quarterly kind of check-ins or meetings could be really nice to have. But I know everyone's busy, so it can be hard to, to figure out sometimes.
Okay, thank you very much and thanks for coming once again.
Counselor Bordelone, did you wish to speak again?
Yep, thank you. That basically Counselor Franco kind of segued in what, what I was, had here is, you know, as it states as of right now, unless something changes, it looks like it's, you know, the likelihood of funding it in this coming budget season is not looking likely. I was just, my notes here just are kind of looking and saying that would it be this time again next year to think about the budget season for the following year? Or what's, you know, timeframe, um, you know, based on your budget? Is this a good time for next year to bring this back up? Or maybe a little bit, you know, towards the end of October, first week in November, just so we can kind of keep it on our radar?
This is a great time, anytime really in October, this is when we start our SIP process. We had a, a public input session that only two people came to. But that started last week. And then, like I said, tomorrow, we're going to start with that internal meeting. But really, it could also come later in October, but October is a great month to have this kind of conversation next year for, for sure. And then, and then probably just stay in touch, because like we said, we'll hand things over to the Board of Finance in January.
Well, well, thanks, thanks again, and it's, it's great. And I, I definitely agree that more joint collaborative work, um, I think it helps dismiss any rumors and, and it provides a lot of public transparency with neighboring towns. So I, I welcome it and I appreciate you coming out, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
I just wanted to say thank you for your work with the manager and and Health Department to work on downtown Mystic and helping out with setting up the one-way traffic on the bridge and helping out with the signage. And I think it was really good for both of our communities to come out with a united front and really trying to help out with all our guests that we have downtown Mystic during the summertime and even into the fall. So thank you for cooperating with us and setting up some of those things, the measures that have been put in place and for your work on the parking as well, that's very important. And once again, we really do appreciate your time. We know you're very busy, First Selectman and Mr. O'Brien as well. So thank you again for coming out and be well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, stay safe everybody and appreciate the invitation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Right, we are on to item 5B, which is 202703 Nava Retail Presentation. And this was on page 17 in your packet. And we have with us this evening, Mr. Bronk, Mr. Casey Kidd from Nava Retail and Mr. Bishay from Nava Retail as well. So I will turn this over to Mr. Bronk if he'd like to kind of introduce things, please. Or Mr. Reiner, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you, cut the chain of command out, Mr. Reiner. Whichever one from your department was just introduced, thank you.
I think I'll take the lead. Good evening. As an introduction to Nava Retail, they are a retail hospitality consultant focused on commerce. And we initially met them over a year ago with some of the retail conferences that the Economic Division attends, Boston and New York. And Casey Kidd's been talking to us for a while about what they offer. And in light of the COVID situation, it actually provided us a unique opportunity to work with Nava Retail and trying to assist some of our local businesses. So tonight, Casey will be providing a presentation regarding the latest business survey results. As a recap, there are four survey phases that are being conducted. The first one was done in the spring. The second one, which he will present tonight, was from the summer. A third will occur this fall and the last one will occur in the winter. Obviously, COVID has significantly disrupted Groton small and medium-sized businesses. Although the summer has helped some, some of those businesses, particularly retail and restaurants, that actually is still concerning to us because of the weather changes. People have been talking about that. It is quite serious as the seasons change, the small businesses will be significantly impacted. So Nava Retail will explain tonight the results to date so that Groton can best understand these business impacts and the trends overall with some focus on industry sector. What we will do with the results is help try to target and focus our, our resources back to businesses. Cases, case in point, we've already assisted with PPE assistance, tried to assist with some marketing efforts. And recently, the latest newsletter focused on trying to teach and educate some businesses how to work more with their digital media. Case in point, how to adjust their hours of operation on Google. That was recently released, I, I believe that maybe some of you have that hyperlink. The last part of the presentation tonight, Casey will talk about retail recruitment as a focus. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Casey.
Thanks Paige, I, just to clarify, can everyone see my screen? I've got the PowerPoint pulled up and I think.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, just making sure. So just to give you guys some background, um, you know, obviously in, in January of 2020, we didn't think that we would be doing COVID research, but what we found with our existing clientele and also, you know, some prospects that we were talking to is that we were really well-equipped to be able to do this sort of research. So when COVID hit, the first thing we started doing was reaching out to some people that we know that, you know, might have been affected by COVID and, and asking them, you know, if there's anything we could do to help. So that was kind of what spurred a lot of this. And as Paige said, we, we've already completed two, the, the four phases. But really, we're, we're kind of learning as we're going, just because this is kind of a living, breathing thing. It's very dynamic in nature and, and obviously our data has to be able to change with it. So that's something that we're still trying to iron out some things. But I think overall, it gives a really good perspective of what's going on in your community at any given time, especially as close to real time as we can possibly get. Have to issue the disclaimer that, you know, none of our recommendations are financial advice to any group. We just, we provide data, you know, if it helps to make decisions, obviously that's something we want to be a part of, but we can't make them for you. So this is part of the phase two overview. This is basically what we've been doing for COVID-19 is we've been going and, and calling a lot of these businesses and collecting data from them, aside from just calling businesses, which we really do find to be the most effective. We also collect cell phone data. We track cell phones where they're coming from, where they're going to, how long they were there, how many times they were there for, you know, different areas that we survey. So when we put all this data together, we also use Experian, which is the credit reporting agency. But when we put all this information together, essentially it gives us a broad view of what's happening in a community. And for a number of reasons, obviously for COVID, it's to track how businesses are doing throughout the pandemic. But also for retail recruitment, we use this information quite a bit as well, which I'll explain later. So for phase two, what we did here is we started August 10th and went through September 7th. I believe our dates for phase one were right at the, it was right at the brink of reopen. So what we were able to do essentially in phase one is collect all the information prior to reopen. So we had a, an idea of how businesses were doing before the mandate was lifted and businesses were allowed to reopen. Then of course, now we have the information on how they're doing after the reopen. One of the biggest indicators that we come back to time and time again is whether or not a business is open as to, you know, indicate how they're doing in, in terms of revenue. A lot of the times that we've done these, it's been because cities wanted to know what their sales tax revenue was going to be and potentially even projected, uh, which I know that's lesser a concern in Connecticut, just because y'all give it all to the state. But, you know, at the same time, it does give us an indication of how businesses are doing based on their revenues. So being able to estimate that is crucial. So by calling three times, what we're able to do is identify businesses that are potentially closed. And we do other research as well to make sure that we're not marking businesses as closed that are not in fact closed. But calling them three times at different points in the week or over even a couple of weeks gives us an idea of, of how they're doing in terms of like either being open or not open. So we have a basic script that we use. Of course, it depends on who's calling, their personalities all vary. But we do try to stick to a basic script that, that, you know, includes some of this information and asking them some of the questions that I have here. Obviously, you know, some are more apt to answering these questions and some, you know, don't know. We always try to ask for a manager and find out, you know, from someone that does know a little bit more intimately how the business is doing. But obviously, you know, when people get calls from strangers, they're not always ready to give up information. Thankfully, we've done this for other cities even prior to working with Groton. So it's helped us to kind of curtail like what we need to be doing and changing up things as, you know, as they're working or not working. So in total, we were surveying 887 businesses. We did omit some of those and the main reason for that is they would be government entities, public administration. Obviously, there's a lot of various sectors that would show up as a business, but it's not so much a revenue generator for the city. So we do omit some of these, but it's very carefully done. The criteria is basically we go line by line and say, hey, you know, is this an economic impact on, on the city's bottom line? So we ultimately called 554 out of those 448 answered. Out of the, the some that we called, some of them did decline. At the end of the day, there's really nothing I can do to, to get them to answer our questions. We asked very nicely, we're very polite with them, but some just don't feel comfortable giving us that information. But in general, we got a pretty good sample size. Out of those 30 were corporate-type businesses where they say to call corporate. So we do have other ways of getting that information. Thankfully, a lot of those types of businesses are publicly traded. So we have a lot of revenue information about them just through the stock market. So we were able to analyze 554 businesses in Groton, which is a pretty good sample size to indicate how the local economy is doing. So for the purposes of this presentation, we'll be covering data between the months of June and August. Now, it really doesn't align with, you know, Q1, Q2, Q3. But at the same time, what we found is a lot of the businesses remit sales tax quarterly, which we do incorporate some of that information that we have from the state or as much as they'll give us at this point. But mostly, you know, for the, the purposes of this presentation, we'll be looking at after the businesses were allowed to reopen and how they're doing after that happened. So there was 32 businesses that answered during phase one and did not answer during phase two. This doesn't necessarily mean that they are closed, but at the same time, it's an indication that we would not expect to see. These are businesses that were open and are potentially now closed. I don't want to say that they're permanently closed, but something has happened in between our first survey and our second survey. There's 111 businesses that did not answer during phase one that did answer during phase two. It's good to see that number is much higher. This means that they were closed before, now they're reopened and they're doing something. They, they were able to answer the phone, they're accepting customers, that sort of thing, which is a good signal. This gives you a little bit more information of, of, you know, who answered and who didn't answer based on NAICS code. If you're not familiar with NAICS, it's an industry classification system that basically separates out types of businesses based on this, you know, hierarchy of codes. And so at the, the highest level, the two digits for NAICS, it shows you kind of, you know, the number of businesses and, and how they're answering these calls in, in terms of like, you know, the ones we care a lot about because they're one of the ones that are most effective is retail-type businesses. The NAICS codes for those would be 44, 45, and 722. So a lot of this data will kind of go back to that and I'll reiterate that a little bit later. We found most businesses closed around the middle of March and they reopened by the first part of June, which really made it good for when we were able to do this survey, just because we obviously, we want to get the best sample of businesses while they're closed and then businesses while they're reopened. So we tried to start as soon as we could, uh, getting the closed businesses on the phase one. And then also, we gave them a little bit of leeway on phase two so that we can make sure everybody that's going to be open is, is good and open. We're not bothering them while they're trying to reopen, that sort of thing. So we tried to time it so that we were being considered of the businesses when we were calling. You guys have seen the charts, so the confirmed cases and deaths, just put that in there. In the previous presentation we did, we actually did a little bit of comparison amongst the confirmed cases, how they've gone up and how the revenues have dropped. And so how they're basically an inverse of, of a sort, because as the case is going up, obviously, we see the, the revenues going down. That's not quite the case as much now, that they're not mandated to be closed, but at the same time, there is a correlation there. This gives you an idea of just, you know, as you break it out by NAICS codes, the, the industry sector codes, how they're doing in terms of revenue. Again, these are estimates. You'll notice that we're basically, we're taking it down to the quarterly level at this point, just because of the sum of the data that we're using, we're not able to break out further and then divide that amongst months. Now, obviously, it does, it would get very close at the year end. You would see that these, you know, these would match up pretty close with the, the year-end revenues. But when it comes to taking quarterly data and breaking it down to what's happening over each month, it's more or less an average at that point. This breaks down, again, one of the, the important sectors that I know we all talk about and that's retail. So I broke that down even further into three-digit codes where you can see things like, you know, specifically gas stations, how that has changed over time, or even accommodations or our food service and drinking places, restaurants. We're able to see just how those industry sectors are being affected. So when you compile all this information together and we take a look at the totals that we have, we see this sort of pattern here, uh, which is more or less a V. It's just the, the, the end of the V hasn't quite gone back up. And with Groton being a more seasonal market, we may not see that this year. I knew that looking at years past and revenues that, you know, basically some of your, your best months are going to be during the summer months. And, you know, I know a lot of tourism helps to drive that. So we would expect to see a V, but it may be kind of at its peak at this point based on what we're seeing as far as seasonality with the, the traffic that, you know, you usually see throughout the, the summer months. We found that, you know, businesses that service events, so event-driven types of service businesses are pretty heavily impacted and, and still at this moment heavily impacted, just because a lot of that's been put on hold. I know that there's been some resurgence in those types of, you know, services, but obviously not everyone has bounced back as, as quickly as, as some other industry sectors have. Salons, restaurants, retail, hotels were very heavily impacted. Some of this may be redundant from our previous presentation, but at the same time, you know, it's something to note that some of these industry sectors are still struggling even now. So that's something to keep in mind for the city. We were able to tabulate between January and August, this is year-to-date basically, or at least as far as the scope of the, the data that we have here, about $715 million in total revenue lost as a result of the pandemic. So what we're doing here is we're taking previous year's revenues, seeing what the normal value should be, and then ultimately what we're estimating the values to be right now. So this gives us a pretty good indication of how much revenue has been potentially lost. Now, at the same time, some of these sales did go to online. This is not factoring in necessarily the online sales. Some of these, you know, those dollars I'm sure were spent, but at the same time, they were not spent locally. They were not spent in the town of Groton. We found that, you know, total retail revenue, when you break it back down into sectors, 44, 45, and 722. We found that, you know, total retail revenue, when you break it back down into sectors forty-four, forty-five and seven twenty-two, that's your basic retail trade and restaurants. We found that over a hundred million dollars has been potentially lost this year alone. So that's a pretty big, you know, figure, especially for a town this size. Three point one percent of businesses stated they lack proper COVID safety equipment. That was something we got a, a number for in the previous survey. And so when we surveyed this again in phase two, we found that this is down about ten percent from the first time we surveyed it. So it just tells us that, you know, by, you know, providing this sort of feedback to the city, the people like Paige and Sam and John were able to effectively do some things that might decrease some of these numbers. So obviously if they were having trouble before, by, you know, making some of the recommendations we've made, you know, obviously we, we were able to find that there's a ten percent drop in this particular question that we were asking. And that's not to say that everyone even answered that question, but when we asked if we're taking a look at everyone that answered it, those people alone showed a decrease of ten percent, which I think is something to be proud of. Nearly fifty percent of businesses stated they were worse off since before the pandemic. And that's something that, you know, it's, it's kind of vague, but at the same time, it just goes to show that everyone has been saying kind of the same things that they're, you know, they're still struggling. And that's something to keep in mind, just because, you know, as we go into a more, more of a down season for the local economy, it definitely want to be uplifting for those as they go into this next season. Nearly twenty percent of businesses are performing better than they expected. That's one of the really interesting things about this pandemic is that while it has affected a lot of businesses, there's still some standouts that are doing better than other businesses that we've surveyed. And so that's just kind of a unique, I guess, you know, aspect about this. Like I said, it's very dynamic. I would have never expected that. I would assume this would have affected a lot of, you know, industry sectors, you know, across the board. But there are actually some that are doing better than, you know, than they would have expected to be doing this time last year. Nearly sixty percent of businesses stated they had supply chains disruptions. And that's something that really came up. Even we were talking to Paige and Sam originally about doing this survey is, I think, you know, even then they mentioned supply chain being an issue. And so we took that in consideration. We asked this particular question every time we do this type of survey, just to find out, are you having trouble getting the merchandise that you sell or the products that you need in order to perform the service you do or what have you? Retail businesses, you know, say that the worst supply chain disruptions, you know, with seventy percent experiencing difficulties. That's, you know, really interesting, especially for the retail sector, just because they are heavily reliant on this particular, you know, aspect of a business. Obviously, you know, I run a consulting business, our supply chain is, you know, whether or not I have internet that day. So, but it's something to take into consideration for those that, you know, they have to have these products in order to do or sell the products that they, you know, they sell. Convenience stores have been experiencing a large delays for receiving tobacco products. I didn't think that that would be an issue, but obviously I don't know if it's that smoking's picked up or if there's, you know, somehow a supply chain disruption there. But that was another indication that we'd gotten from some of the businesses that we surveyed. And just to let you know, you know, if we're putting some of these facts and figures in here, it's definitely quite a few businesses that are giving us this information. We're not getting this from just a couple. This is a little bit more widespread than I think you would imagine. Forty-five percent of businesses have had to reduce their hours at some point. Obviously, that is how, you know, a lot of businesses have adapted to this particular pandemic. You know, just because they are trying to weigh out, you know, how long can I stay viable by having this amount of employees on the clock for, you know, whatever amount of hours they need to operate in order to do what they do. And obviously reducing hours does allow them to reduce payroll. Just as an aside, payroll is, is something that we know to be a, a huge expenditure for most businesses. I know it is for us especially. And so we, we put a lot of weight on how they're doing as far as their account for workers, you know. And so if they're reducing the amount of workers or increasing the amount of workers, it gives us a better indication of how their revenues are looking, just because it costs a lot of money to pay these people to be there. Nearly forty percent of businesses who reduced their hours have gone back to normal hours. So that's good to know that, you know, if they have previously reduced their hours, they are bouncing back and going more back to, or more so back to their normal operating hours. And I think that's important to know. That just lets us know that they're finally adjusting, they're getting used to how they've got to do things, you know, and, and, you know, make ends meet. Thirty percent of businesses stated they do not keep their hours updated on any online formats. That's is a big deal. That's something that I've found to be the case, not just in Groton, but it's, it's been across the board. We've been working nationwide on this sort of thing. And we found that there's a huge deficit in the adoption of online, you know, platforms and how much they update their online platforms. So obviously people are checking before they leave the house to make sure that these businesses are open. Because the last thing they want to do is drive to their, their place of business and get there and they're closed. I know I've done that several times here in Texas and, you know, it's, it's a wasted trip for me because then I've got to figure out who is open. So, you know, updating hours online is a big deal, something I'd love to encourage the businesses to do, just because that could potentially affect their, their revenue. Many businesses have expressed difficulty in getting hourly changes or hour changes on Google Verified. I know from my own dealings with Google, this has been something that is very tough to do right now. I think Google's inundated with the amount of requests that they've gotten. I think before they had sort of like a moderator that would decide whether or not this is a legit change or this is not. Versus now they're so flooded with requests, I think they're trying to figure out a, a way to automate that. Another thing that we've run into with other cities and other businesses is that sometimes they will submit requests, but because of the type of business they are, they don't have the authority to change that or it does not allow them to change that because there's some other, you know, obstacle in the way. I know for businesses that lease space, sometimes they show up as, you know, a different type of business than, you know, or they may not even manage their Google My Business account. So obviously that's something to keep in mind. Other than, you know, getting Google to, to disseminate more information about how they do these selections and, and moderate this process, I really don't have a lot of recommendations there, other than it's something to be mindful of, just because some businesses may have been trying to update their hours and they just simply can't right now. Some businesses did not apply for PPP due to not understanding the loan forgiveness process. That's another thing that I can speak intelligently on, just because we also participated in the PPP program. And I know that it took me and several others about half a day to be able to get through the paperwork. And even then I was not confident in some of the things that we filled out, just because it is rather confusing. I think because there was a lack of documentation on what was going to happen at forgiveness period or at the point of forgiveness that kind of deterred a lot of businesses from applying for that particular, particular program through the government. So it's, it's not great, but it lets you know that if there's any way to educate them on the loan forgiveness portion of that program, it might, you know, hopefully encourage some to apply for it, especially if there's a second round, which, you know, we all hope there is. Fifty percent of businesses that applied for COVID nineteen, you know, relief funds did receive, or they did apply for those. And then ninety percent of those who applied did receive some form of loan or SBA funds. And so that was good to know that, at least out of the businesses that we surveyed, most of the ones that did apply did receive them, but there again, only about half of them applied. And I do think that that was largely due to the fact that they didn't understand the forgiveness process. We estimate nearly a thousand workers are still displaced. Now, this is down quite a bit from the first phase presentation that we did, where I believe we had about thirty-five hundred workers displaced. So obviously a lot of that has changed over time. It's good to see that, you know, obviously we were able to mitigate some of those unemployment figures, but obviously this still leaves us at about ten percent unemployment. The good thing is that when I checked with the state's website and what they're reporting for unemployment, this does pretty much align with what they're showing, at least for this period that we surveyed. So these numbers are still pretty, you know, accurate as far as like the businesses that we've been talking to. So they've undoubtedly given us pretty good information to be able to come to some of these conclusions. Over fifty percent of the health and consulting sector businesses have adopted an online platform. The reason for this, I believe, is that they're more apt for adopting technology and, you know, using technology as part of their business. So obviously the health sector is a very high-tech sector. Obviously consulting, especially nowadays, is a very high-tech sector. So it was quicker for them to adopt an online platform. Twenty-seven percent of all businesses have adopted an online platform. Only ten percent of service-type businesses like salons and auto care centers have adopted some type of online platform. And I think this goes back to the original point I was making about the healthcare and, and tech sector, that they're just more apt for doing that type of thing versus, I don't think, you know, the, the average salon is, is equipped to be able to adopt some sort of online platform. And that's something that I think we need to, to reach out or potentially reach out to some of these types of businesses to make sure that they have the ability to, if not, to be able to help them in some way so that they can embrace the online marketing that other businesses are embracing right now. Only twenty-three percent of retail-type businesses have adopted an online platform. This was shocking to me, just because I expected the retail sector to adapt a little bit faster, but it looks like, I, I, my guess is they're probably inundated with so many other things that, you know, concern them trying to keep the lights on right at this point, that that's probably less of concern. But I think it's important to note that these are things that could affect their revenue as well. So, you know, if they have the ability, it's something to not take lightly. It's something that they should most definitely take a look at. Overall revenue from June to August was estimated to be down about sixteen percent. This is much less than the forty-one point four six percent decrease from the months of March to May. That was around the, the period of time that we surveyed for phase one. We suspect this is obviously because, you know, many of the businesses were able to reopen. And obviously for you guys, being heavily tourism-driven, especially during the summer months, that's a good time to be open. It's a good thing that, you know, if the pandemic had to happen in a time and where all the businesses were shut down this, you know, the early spring, that's obviously better than if it had happened where they had to be shut down from June to August. So another thing we took a look at as part of this phase two, and I'm glad the, the city or the town obliged to, you know, us taking a look at this was lodging. We work heavily with a company called SDR, they're out of Tennessee. And what they do is they have a platform basically where they, they sell this platform to hotels. And what happens is, as, you know, they get to use this platform, some, most of the time for a very cheap cost, they collect information that goes through this hotel management software that they use. Now, I don't completely understand the ins and outs of what it looks like, but we do have the ability to get information from that platform via SDR. So they've helped us out with that. So what we took a look at was sixteen different lodging locations from January twenty-twelve to August twenty-twenty. It's all historical data, so what we're able to see is what happened in the past and compare it to previous years. Obviously, having a baseline really helped us to be able to take a look at this and know what it all means. Because, you know, had I just looked at this year alone, it would have looked nothing like twenty-nineteen. So it was good that we were able to get that historical data. We found that last year about sixty-five percent occupancy was pretty much the standard versus this year, just shy of forty-five percent. So obviously quite a jump there from last year to this year when we compare same months to same months. The number of rooms sold dropped by ten percent compared to last year. That drop was actually not as much as, as I expected it to be. One of the things that really hurt here, and this is looking at monthly revenue, is another thing called ADR, A- Average Daily Rate. And so what happens is it's almost, it's a compounding problem because as occupancy drops down, sometimes and most of the time in, in these scenarios, the ADR, the Average Daily Rate also drops. So then you have a compounding problem where there's less people staying at a property, but they're also, the people that are still staying there are paying less per room. So obviously that doesn't amount to as much revenue. So you see quite a dramatic drop in revenue here when we look month over month at the lodging data. This is just some of the raw data when we compare twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty and how it's changed. Obviously, you know, April and May being heavily, you know, hit very hard. When we look at rooms sold, not quite as dramatic, but still a pretty dramatic drop, you know, in those months. And this is that data. So on to some of the recommendations that we've made. And some of this is redundant from the first phase recommendations. And some of these, you know, have even been implemented since we've made these recommendations, but I'll leave them in here just so that we can cover them as well now as we have, you know, before. We recommend that, you know, assisting local businesses with improving their online presence, especially by outlining the benefits in their specific industry. This is going to be different for each type of business. Obviously, not everybody's going to adopt it in the same way. But obviously if we can point out how some of these businesses are adapting or refine, I, I guess some of the standouts and some people that are really taking this and running with it and advertise that to other businesses that may not have adopted their online presence or, or, you know, thought about an online platform, then that may be something that we want to share with them at this point. We need to highlight opportunities for businesses to transition their resources into other industry sectors. This is actually Peter, who's one of our researchers who's on the call with us tonight. This was a recommendation that he had just from, you know, having looked at the data and analyzed some of the notes that we collected. And so that was something that really struck me is, is interesting is, you know, there's definitely, there's a way for certain types of businesses to potentially break out into other markets. We're even, you know, a great example of that where, you know, as a retail recruitment firm, we know that we have the ability to collect data. So obviously we've expanded our horizons quite a bit by being able to do COVID research. And that was just one of the ways that we adapted to the pandemic. But obviously I, I believe that there's some other businesses that could adapt as well, potentially even transition into other industry sectors where they might can make more money right now as a result of the pandemic than they would be currently making this time last year or even right now, doing what they're currently doing. We recommend that assistance be provided for sole providers applying for SBA funds, especially if future rounds are made available. Obviously, that paperwork is horrendous. I did it myself, it's, it's not good. Being able to help them, especially if there's a second round would be crucial. And I think that, you know, explore Groton is, is definitely helping with that. The website's definitely helping with that because I know that there's a lot of information that's been put on there. But at the same time, you know, I, I expect that, you know, some of these businesses might still reach out, especially if there's a second round, trying to figure out how to work through some of this paperwork. Even on the forgiveness side, they might be reaching out just, you know, for help with some of that paperwork on the forgiveness end. And I know that's equally confusing because I've done that recently. We recommend assisting businesses that are having difficulty with Google Business Verification. That's something I, I know that the, the town's working on as well right now. You know, and that's one of those things where you can only, you know, give them so much information. I know a lot of my experience has been, they're just trying to catch up with, you know, all the requests that they're getting right now. So I do think that over time, there's going to be a more streamlined way for businesses to do this. But obviously right now, they're kind of inundated with a lot of businesses trying to do some verification, do hours changes. I know verification is one of those things where it's supposed to be done when you open a new location, but if you've been in Groton for, you know, thirty years now and you've never thought about your Google My Business page, now is obviously a time where a lot of businesses might be thinking about that, just to update hours for that matter. So they're having to verify their businesses that they never thought they would have to thirty years later after being in business. And so that's really, you know, it's, it's halting them at this point, being able to update their hours online. We recommend creating an online directory of businesses to reflect current business hours, especially restaurants. This is also something I believe the town is working on right now. So obviously some of these recommendations are being put into practice, but we obviously want to make sure that they're known that, you know, these are some things that I, we think might would help if they can be, you know, implemented in the next little while. So I open up, you know, to any questions concerning COVID. There is another portion to this, I'm trying to, you know, rush through this, but there's another portion concerning retail recruitment. But I want to make sure before we move on, if there are any COVID-related questions, that I answer those before we proceed to the retail recruitment aspect.
And I'm looking for hands and I'm not seeing Council Franco, go ahead.
Thank you. So some of the things that I'm hearing is Groton still has close to a thousand. This was all of, as of September seventh, correct?
Yes, so basically, you know, we're taking a look across the responses that we've gotten from businesses. One of the things that we asked them is, how many employees do you have normally? And, and bear in mind, we've asked these questions twice now for most businesses because we've done this survey twice. So we're getting their normal employee count or what their manager says they normally have working and then what they currently have working and seeing how that changes over time. So obviously, you know, it's not a, you know, a foolproof way of doing it. I can't go and count each worker in Groton, but at the same time, when you survey six hundred businesses, we get a pretty good indication of how many have found, you know, jobs outside of this, or at least, you know, they're able to hire back some workers that they weren't able to back in April.
Okay, so you're stating that there's like nine hundred and sixty-nine that are still displaced in Groton as of September seventh?
Yes.
And the tempers, about ten percent unemployment? And you verified those numbers with unemployment as well?
Yes.
That says to me, a ten percent is, is very high. So it, it seems like our town is hurting a little bit on the unemployment. When it comes to businesses, there are so many different ways to try and get extra funding. There was the Connecticut Bridge Loan, the SBA with the IDL, there's the PPP loan with forgiveness and all that came with that. I work in healthcare industry, so there were different phases from the HHS with phase two. I work in healthcare industry, so there were different phases from the HHS with phase two and phase three, and phase three just came out recently. And what I have to say from my, just my own personal viewpoint, as my background is a business manager, is that business owners are completely exhausted with everything. They, there, there's so much info with regulations and how to get your money and all the work into going, go, that goes into trying to get this money and all the reports that you need and people that don't understand how to even get these reports. And then you have, you know, all the COVID regulations on top of it. And then the state is constantly changing, you know, what their mandates are and how to do things. So they have to keep on top of that. And so my thought is, the way I see it is that business owners need a lot of help. I mean, I think a lot of help. And my question is, like, if they need assistance to fill out a PPP or the forgiveness or, or how to, how to fill out these, the paperwork for a phase three. I mean, do we, can the town hire accountants to try and like have special days where, you know, business owners can come in and get all these questions answered to them? Do we have some kind of forum where the Economic Development Committee has an open forum and says, hey, we have people here today to answer your questions on how to do the forgiveness? Or did you know that there's these, these programs out there? Like for healthcare, there's a phase three for HHS and I don't know how many people even know about that. I have been on the phone with numerous business owners, like I'll call and order my oil for my house. And because I know the gentleman who owns the business, I actually talked to him. I have a conversation. I'm like, hey, did you know about this one? And he's like, no. And he's writing it all down. And I'm like, get on this one too. And then he's writing all this stuff down. Like, business owners do not know what's going on out there and they don't have the help to do this. They're already exhausted and inundated with so much regulation and changes that are happening and trying to keep a flow. And what can we do as a town to help them? Whether they're forums and bringing in experts and maybe even having people like when it's tax time, like at the senior center, we open up and people are allowed to go there to get assistance to fill out their taxes. I mean, can we have this for our business community? I mean, because I think they really are in dire need of help.
Yeah, I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. And, and, you know, as a business owner myself, and, you know, even someone I think you should take into consideration, I work with government three hundred and sixty-five days a year as part of my business and it's confusing for me. So I'm already used to seeing the type of paperwork that I see. And then on top of that, it's still confusing. I think there's a lot of things out there and a lot of information out there, but at the same time, it's, everything has changed so much and so fast, you know, from program to program to how it's going to be forgiven, which you've got to fill out. I, I do think that outreach would help. I don't know that even with that, you would necessarily reach everyone, but at the same time, if you could potentially provide more businesses with that type of information, you know, either via some type of forum or even just, you know, you know, one of the things that we've recommended with businesses is, you know, or at least towns trying to help their businesses is to, you know, have some sort of outreach, you know, even if you hired someone, you know, at the city to just make a few calls each day to find out how they're doing, if there's anything they could do to help. Hopefully someone that knows a little bit more about some of these programs, that might be money well spent. I can't say for sure, but at the same time, I, I know that there's a struggle with information. It's, it's information overload. You see how many facts and figures I've thrown at you guys in thirty minutes. And, you know, you think about like, these are just things that we've thought about to ask, not even things that businesses are trying to implement. So when you compound that with the fact that they're also worrying about whether or not Brittany's coming in at five o'clock versus seven o'clock, or if Sandra can't make it, or, you know, these are just, and they're inundated with so many things that don't concern them actually running their business, but it definitely, it's going to affect whether or not they can run their business if they don't have the money that they need right now. So obviously, it's something that they need, but it's just, it's not highest on the list of priorities. And as a business owner, I don't know how you get someone to see that. And at the same time, I think access to information and having this a little bit more clearly explained to them might expedite that process for them, or at least make it, make them able to put it higher on their list of priorities.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I just, I mean, since the COVID, back in even March, I mean, I, this has just been a priority of mine is to find ways to help our businesses because I think this is is, it's going to be devastating because as a business, you know, working in business, it's, the PPP money is basically all been spent. And there, there's not that much help left. That was the biggest chunk of money to come and help a business. And if we have another wave that's going to peak, maybe come January, and I don't know if they're going to come out with another business incentive to help them, you know, a stimulus to the businesses. And if there's not, I mean, that's how a lot of them just stayed afloat all summer. I mean, that's what maybe paid their payroll because like, as you said, it's your biggest expense as a business owner is your payroll. And a lot of times the PPP money, that's the only reason they survived. And they've probably exhausted it now. And now is going like, and as we live in a community that we're seasonal and summer was supposed to be our best month usually, like what's going to happen? And then I'm, this winter, I'm dreading it. And I think it's going to be very dire. And that's why I'm saying that I think outreach is like the biggest thing that we need as a town should be doing. And and if you have any more suggestions, please offer them because as I think as a council and as a town, we're trying, we want to do anything we can to help businesses stay afloat until we can get through this.
Mr. Bronk wanted to speak. Mr. Bronk?
I just wanted to agree with Counselor Franco. However, over the past few months, we've, we've actually experienced a tidal wave ourselves in trying to understand all of the federal and state programs. And there are some communities that have attempted to convert or translate these federal programs into more local speak. I don't know that that's necessarily been successful. Our approach has been to try to keep up to, up, up to speed on it and using Explore More. We actually have a business COVID page and providing primary data because there are other groups that are, in all honesty, more of an expert than we are locally in understanding the programs. SBDC, they send out information all the time. We'll put that on our webpage and encourage people to go and they're doing a program, I believe tomorrow. They sent us an email yesterday. Put that on our webpage so people can understand how can you do the loan forgiveness? We have been successful this year as a result of COVID and having our EDC business outreach. We have all time numbers and having our own local commissioners go out and speak with businesses to point them in the direction of these resources on our webpage and try to get their email addresses. Also sector, I think I'd mentioned before, the federal government has provided sector, our Regional Economic Development Organization, direct funding so that they will have a revolving loan program for those who cannot get the appropriate funding through normal channels. Most of the PPP money went through banks. And so those who don't go through the banks, if you need funding, you go through sector. Sector also has money now to hire. And I believe they have just hired someone to assist with local business, people who need to complete the paperwork. So there are all of these pieces that are coming together. We see our role is to try to make those resources available rather than sitting down with the business themselves and walking them through a fairly complex procedure. We'd rather get them with the people that are focused on those forms day in and day out.
Yeah, fully understood. I just think that maybe having open forums where people can come and say, this is my problem. What do you, what do you have? Because they don't even know what's out there and they don't even make, some of these may not even know what sector is, or they don't know where to find it, and they may not even know the town page. So I know you're doing the outreach, you know, through the EDC, and I think that's absolutely wonderful. And I think that's great. And especially getting emails, I think is a very important tool. I just think as much, I, I would like as a town to do as much as we possibly can to help these businesses. And thank you for coming and for all your information.
Counselors of Perry, you have a question, sir?
Just a comment. As Counselor Franco was speaking about seeing what the town can do to help the small businesses with the difficulties of applying for the loans and grants that are available. Jennifer Miele flashed a message up on my screen. I presume on many of yours too. And she said, to all panelists and attendees, the library can assist. One-on-one small business appointments. We can work with Paige. I think, I think it's great that, that, that the library is offering services in this way. And it is something from the town, we're reaching out to small businesses with some difficulties navigating the complex bureaucratic system of loans available to them. So I just wanted to say bravo to the library.
Thank you, Counselors of Perry. Mr. Kidd, did you have other things you wish to present to the council this evening?
Yes. So there's a second part. It's not all doom and gloom. I wanted to talk a little bit about moving forward and what that, you know, means in terms of retail. So as our core, you know, basis, it is a retail recruitment firm. What we primarily do is we help cities reach out to retailers, collect all the data that they would need, reach out to retailers, developers that might be interested in the communities that we serve. Again, we use a lot of cell phone data and what this allows us to do is track where the consumers are coming from. So what you see here is kind of that raw data. And so what we did, and this is all also affected by COVID. I didn't want to take, you know, last year's data alone and just say, all right, well, when everything's great, how does it look? Because, you know, there's some considerations and things that have changed over time that would affect, you know, new retailers that are expanding into areas. So obviously that's something we wanted to include. So like I said, this is some of the raw data. And what we do with that is we filter out those that are kind of the one-off shoppers, the ones that are not there on a consistent basis. It's no surprise that retailers that are expanding right now are more cautious than ever, just because they want to make sure that if they spend dollars to expand into a community that they can make those dollars back. And that is primarily done with shoppers that are there on a frequent basis. And so that is kind of our criteria of, of how we filter them down. This is what we call the retail trade area for a community. This is just a, a kind of an example of what that looks like for Grattan. And it's not necessarily a, a hard, fast science because obviously you can be outside this area and drive into Grattan to shop, but from the areas in which consumers originate the most, I'd say eighty to eighty-five percent of the shoppers originate from this green area here. And it's almost that you can see it's a sort of a heat map as well, where it's really hot there in the middle, but they are coming from all of these areas pretty frequently, enough to consider them part of Grattan's retail trade area. So the town itself has, you know, just shy of forty thousand people. And during the day that goes up quite a bit to forty-four thousand, thanks to the jobs that are there. But then when you look at this retail trade area, nearly double that total figure of the town's population. And so while forty thousand is, is something to be proud of for the town, especially when advertising to retailers, what if you can advertise nearly eighty thousand people that are driving on a frequent basis to Grattan to shop? So obviously that's something that we want to, to advertise to potential new retailer targets. You know, one of the things that I also, you know, I like to include is part of this is that they don't necessarily have to be making Grattan a destination for their retail shop, and they may be there for some completely different purpose. And that's what we found in a lot of towns. My hometown of Pontot, Mississippi is very heavily industrial. I mean, it is littered with factories upon factories upon factories. So it's not that people are driving upon a talk with the, the, the goal of shopping there, but they're on their way home from work or they're on their way to work, or, you know, they're, they're there for some purpose. And that turns into retail dollars through their being there. So don't eliminate those that are maybe not there for the primary purpose of shopping, but commute patterns, like how people are getting to and from work, where they will pass by on their way to work for maybe a coffee shop or even you, a place for groceries on their way home. These are considerations that retailers would be looking at if they were looking at locating or potentially locating in a town like Grattan. So household incomes, obviously in this part of the world are higher, much higher than, you know, they would be in the South. We found that even twenty-five percent, nearly twenty-five percent, make more than a hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's something we would like to advertise. Obviously with that type of household income, this is going to attract a different variety of retail shoppers and ultimately retailers. I know some retailers criteria is based upon household income or part of their criteria is household income. So these are facts and figures that obviously would appeal to certain types of retailers. Most of the disposable income, meaning the, the, the income that you can actually spend on these types of retail products and services, or even restaurants, exists between the ages of forty-five and fifty-four. However, there are more shoppers with disposable income between the ages of fifty-five and sixty-four. They're retirees. And they're loving, living their best life and loving spending their retail dollars in Grattan. So fifty-four percent of income is spent on retail trade. That is a huge, huge figure. If you think about, if you take their disposable income as a whole, which is essentially your income after taxes and the things that you have to pay, you're left with, you know, fifty-four percent of that going to retail trades. So I know that you guys don't get a direct impact from that through like sales tax, but at the same time, when you think about how much income, how many dollars are actually being spent in Grattan? It's, it's kind of crazy to think about. And that's where, going back to the whole COVID thing, obviously, we've got to cultivate as much as we can, new businesses, as well as you making sure that our existing businesses are staying open because obviously there's a lot of dollars at stake here. And those dollars can translate into plenty of other things, you know, more housing development or even things that you would get a direct impact off of. So it's good to keep that in mind that there's a large emphasis placed on retail and how that is an economic factor in Grattan. So we also perform a gap analysis where we're looking at what is the supply, what is the demand? So the demand for Grattan is well over a billion dollars here. But when you look at how much Grattan's actually supplying, meaning that over a billion dollars, one point one billion dollars is being spent. Whether you like it or not, it's being spent. One thing I've learned about this industry is that you can't stop people from spending money. You can only control where they spend it. So if they want to go online and spend it, they spend it online. If they want to spend it in Grattan, they spend it in Grattan. That's the only part of that you can control because these one point one billion dollars will be spent no matter what. The only difference though is only about seven hundred million of that was spent in Grattan. So that's something where obviously you guys know there is leakage or what we call leakage. We also like to take into consideration that there's, while there are online sales happening, there's many opportunities for those same sales to be made in a city like Grattan or in a town like Grattan. That's where a lot of business owners, I think, fail to realize is that adoption of online platforms right now is really going to be your, your, your livelihood for, for at least the end of this pandemic, till the end of the pandemic. So that's something to keep in mind is that, you know, obviously the online sales have spiked, but at the same time, it's not all, you know, not all is lost. Obviously there's ways in which to recoup those dollars, but they do need to be, you know, alongside some of these, you know, national retailers like Amazon, Walmart, com and those. Sixty-one percent of retail spending happened in Grattan, which is a good number. It's something to be proud of. At least, you know, it's, it's much better than a lot of the communities that we do work in where they're seeing a lot of leakage. They just don't have the retailers. Grattan does have retailers to recoup some of these dollars, whereas some communities are just significantly lacking. I actually, we have a client city in Tennessee that their residential population is just booming, but the retail has not made it there yet. So almost all of their local economies, you know, dollars are flowing outside for the exception of property tax, just because, you know, they're having to go other places to shop and get the things they need. So when you look at that per capita, when we look at that trade area, that's leaking out six thousand dollars per person. That's, that's little kids, that's retirees, that's, you know, middle-aged families. That is, you know, when you look at it across the spectrum, every person is worth potentially recouping six thousand dollars or sixty-two hundred dollars per person that the city could potentially reclaim. We don't like to call it leakage so much nowadays, we call it opportunity because this is ultimately where the opportunity lies to make money. And that's the way that we sell it back to the retailers that would be interested is that it's not leakage, it's where you're going to make your money. You're not looking at that one point one billion dollars. You're looking at that remaining into the six thousand dollars per person that you're going to recoup by locating your store in Grattan or your restaurant in Grattan. So we take it a step further and we look at something called psychographics, which is essentially a lot of this information, but kind of on steroids. So what it is is basically taking consumer spending data and consumer behavior and mixing with this demographic data along with our cell phone data. Again, a lot of this information does come from some of our credit reporting agencies, credit card transaction data. They have line level transaction data, which helps us in figuring out what's everyone doing. We divide this up in sixty-seven total segments in the psychographics. This is the, the primary one in this part of the country called This is the, the primary one in this part of the country called Set to Impress. Some takeaways from this are consumers are better educated and mobile. They can get around, but they're also, they're a higher-end type of consumer. They, they're all college-educated, but they, you know, they have good jobs. They're looking to spend retail dollars. That's where a lot of that disposable income does come from. But at the same time, they have to have stores locally that they can go to and which for the, you know, the city to be able to see those disposable dollars being spent. They're willing to shop around to find the best price. They do prefer name brands, but they will shop around to find a better deal. So it's not necessarily, they're just walking in, paying the first price that they see, but they do tend to prefer, you know, or become loyal to these certain brands. Quick meals are on the run, or a reality of life. I think that applies to most of us these days. But especially during the pandemic, that's another thing to keep into consideration, is with the mandates, you know, where the shutdown happened. If that were to ever happen again, obviously, having, you know, fast food restaurants is, you know, it's the only way that I, I found during the pandemic to be able to eat, because I don't cook a lot. So, you know, you've got to keep into consideration that we also need to be recruiting those types of restaurants as well. I know a lot of cities would love to see more sit-down restaurants, but at the same time, you know, right now, I, I wouldn't exclude anyone that would be interested in looking. They maintain close relationships with family. That's another thing to consider, is that some of these retailers we'd be targeting would be more family-oriented. I mean, obviously, that's something we would want to take into consideration if they are more family-oriented consumers. Obviously, family, family-style sit-down restaurants are, are something we would be targeting. Social media is definitely a good way to advertise to this particular consumer that is in Groton, just because that is where they are consuming most of their marketing for products and services. It's not to say that this isn't happening all over the, the place, but at the same time, when you consider like where I'm from in Mississippi, only about seventy percent of my hometown has a smartphone. So accessing social media is, is still the majority, but at the same time, there's a minority there of thirty percent that does not even have a device in which they can access this particular platform. So obviously, that's something that businesses would need to embrace, because that is how a lot of the people in Groton consume their, their marketing. They're very connected technologically. We saw that, you know, across the spectrum. There's a lot of things that they were doing to adopt technology. It, it's not, going back to the COVID thing, I don't think it's that the, the businesses don't necessarily know how to adopt this online platform or be able to use Google My Business. I think it's just a matter of priority. And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but at the same time, I think it's just, it's fallen so low on their list of priorities that that's probably been the last thing that they've thought about right now, because obviously, there, there are a lot of consumers there that are technologically advanced. So I would expect a lot of business owners to be the same. About twelve percent of retail spending is happening online. We, we expect this to be a lot higher because of COVID. These are, you know, pre-COVID numbers, just because we look over a variety of different, you know, publicly available sources for this. Obviously, a lot of the retailers like to keep it a secret what they're doing, just because they're competitors. But at the same time, we would estimate that some of this would have doubled in the month of April and May. Obviously, a lot of spending went down, went to online when the shutdown happened. Nearly forty-three thousand people died, dined at a sit-down family-style restaurant in the past six months. Like I was saying earlier, the family-style type of restaurant is definitely one of our targets moving forward, just because that is something that the consumers there like to embrace. Ten percent of residents, and this, I just throw this in here because it's kind of creepy, but ten percent of residents ate at the Buffalo Wild Wings in Waterford recently. Fifteen percent ate at the Olive Garden. And so this is just an example of how specific we can get as far as like where consumers are going to spend dollars. Obviously, you know, they're also in Groton for one reason or another, but there's not an Olive Garden, and there's not a Buffalo Wild Wings. So obviously, some of these types of restaurants would be targets, just because they're leaving the community and going to other places to eat and, and purchase products. Building materials was a very high leakage. When we were looking at it over, you know, the different industry sectors, nearly fifty-five million dollars leaked out in building materials. Grocery, another high one, nearly fifty million dollars in grocery leakage. And this is not to say that you don't have grocery sales, but when you look at the total amount that's spent, and then you look at the amount that's spent in the town, there's obviously dollars that are being spent outside of the town, because the, the numbers are not coincident. Nearly thirty million dollars of clothing and apparel leakage. And I'd like to point out that we don't expect to recoup a hundred percent of these dollars, but locating just one retailer, just one restaurant could potentially recoup quite a chunk of this. Restaurant leakage, twenty-four million dollars there, you know? Even some of these fast food restaurants, you're looking at two to three million dollars that they do annually in revenue. So just locating a couple of restaurants could mean four and five million dollars that we're whittling away at this twenty-four million dollars that we're looking at here. And so what we propose is the, the town to kind of compose a retail wish list. And something that a lot of our clients have been doing recently is they've been performing a social media survey, which we've been assisting with. So basically, I put together a Google form, and they've attached it to a Facebook post, where they've asked the town via their Facebook page, hey, what would you like to see in Groton? What sort of restaurants would you like to see? What sort of retailers would you like to see? And so what we've been able to do is work with the town and tabulate those responses and help to, you know, essentially come up with a retail wish list. Now, that's not to say that it's going to be completely realistic, because obviously, some things, you know, the data has to dictate it's possible and feasible. But at the same time, I know that you, you know, as councilors, you hear from the constituents, here's what I'd really love to see in Groton. So we would like some of that feedback as well to incorporate in our target list going forward. This will help us with finding out who we're going to be targeting at the particular trade shows and events that we will be attending. I believe the city, at least Paige and Sam, will be attending the RECON show in New York. Now, it is virtual this year, but at the same time, ICSC has been adapting as well and, and coming up with some virtual trade shows. There's also projected in-person show for RECON next year, also in Vegas, and that will be in December. I'm not sure why they picked Vegas in December, but that is what they've outlined for our next in-person show. But obviously, there's other ways in which we reach out to these retailers and developers, email, phone calls. Some of them, we're even going to meet with in person. It just really depends on who's willing and, and able to meet with us. And I know this is something that the, the town's been working on as well. So, you know, collaboratively, we are going to be coming up with this list, and then also be reaching out to some of the targets on this list moving forward. So any questions on the retail recruitment part? I try not to, you know, linger, so that if there were any, that we could answer those in a timely fashion.
Trader Joe's here. All right, let's see. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. So in consideration of all this information, and you want to ask our residents basically in a survey, what would you like to see in Groton? But with all the data that's, that you compiled, we need to sort of know what we're, what we're looking to go after. We have, I mean, where does Groton stand in, in the scale of things? I mean, there's Rodio Drive with all the very upscale Beverly Hills stuff, and then you have the very low end, which is like dollar stores. Where does Groton fall into that spectrum? I mean, are we closer to the dollar store? Are we mid? Are we in the middle? I mean, like, we need to, it's like, who are, what are we looking to go after first, before we go after anybody?
If I'm being candid, I, I suspect what's happening is that a lot of these shoppers are just going to some of the other places where these types of retailers do exist. And some of those that we're seeing, obviously, I did not expect building materials to be that high. I did not expect grocery to be that high. That tells me that obviously, those two sectors alone needed to be targeted. Now, as far as, you know, the specific retailer that we'll be targeting, that will be largely dictated by, you know, who's currently expanding, who we're able to get in front of, who will listen to our pitch, that sort of thing. And we're pretty good about, you know, knocking on doors and getting our foot in, but at the same time, the data does need to support it. Now, what we have found through doing some of the surveying is that, you know, at the end of the day, like doing the, the survey or at least the Google form, there's nothing, nothing lost with that. It's free to do. And, you know, it gives us a lot of insight as to who would be shopping at this particular establishment. Are they happy driving to Waterford to eat at Olive Garden? Or would they be willing to patronize an Olive Garden in Groton? Or would they be willing to patronize a Buffalo Wild Wings in Groton? And so that's something that we would like to take a look at and just really see what the community would support. The numbers support it. If you're looking at it in terms of just criteria, I mean, you guys have the incomes, you've got the population. You could potentially support some of these establishments, but ultimately, the consumers themselves have to patronize these businesses. And we have to be able to prove that to the retailers when we're pitching the town. And that is kind of the, that's the hurdle that we all fight. I know that even before hiring us, you know, that's something that I'm sure that Paige and Sam had to fight at trade shows themselves, is justifying and coming up with a really compelling reason as to why, you know, person X should locate their next store in the town of Groton. So I think it does go back to the community, but obviously, there are some indications from the data that we've collected, which ones would be standouts. Obviously, some of those sectors that I pointed out, there's very high amounts of leakage we would want to target. I don't think it's just dollar stores. You know, obviously, there's going to be those in any community, but at the same time, I think we could set our, our sights a little higher than that, just based on some of the incomes and, and things like that, the type of consumer. You know, knowing that they're, they're loyal to name brands. Obviously, you know, dollar stores are great, but at the same time, a, a consumer that's loyal to a name brand is also going to be looking for a more upscale type of retail as well. What I expect to be happening is that there's going to be a lot of adapting from the retailer's side just throughout the pandemic. Obviously, right now, everyone's working from home, and my favorite stores in the world, Brooks Brothers, has filed for bankruptcy. And I hope that they restructure, and I can continue to buy my shirts there, but at the same time, because people are not going out and buying suits right now. It's really hurt them. So I think what you're going to see is a lot of retailers like that adjusting and, and carrying more casual clothing, or, or, you know, that's just an example, but I think there's going to be some adapting happening as a result of the pandemic. And, and retail going forward is going to look very, very different than it currently looks.
Okay, like, because I'm just having, I've been grappling with this for years now, trying to get a handle on exactly. I know towns, all the data is compiled, and then that, that basically shows what you can bring into your town and what kind of businesses are going to want to come into your town. So if like, yeah, we have people that love Kate Spade purses, is Kate Spade going to come and put, you know, like, a store here? Do we have that? Will, does our data show that? You know, I mean, they want a Trader Joe's here, but then on the other hand, Trader Joe's has this very special criteria of a certain population point, and we don't meet that. So that's what I'm trying to understand, is what can we get here? And what's going to drive them to want to come here? I mean, and who are they? Who are we going after? That's, that's a big question.
Well, and, you know, I, I think that some of those that you mentioned would definitely be targets. One of the things that we are, because of, you know, there's a lot of confidentiality in talking to these retailers. We are very apprehensive about stating publicly who we're talking to. And that's something we can definitely deliver back to, you know, the planning department, but at the same time, in, in a public forum, the retailers don't really go for that. They don't like us to advertise, you know, that we're currently in talks with them, or we're working on a deal. I can say publicly that you meet a lot of the criteria that would be set forth for those types of retailers, and you also have the consumer base that shops at that type of store. My only thing would be to look at potential cannibalization with other stores. So market cannibalization, meaning that they are, so you're so close to other potential stores like that, that they would not be able to recapture those dollars, at least in a, in a fashion where they could justify building a store in Groton and getting that money in Groton versus having it, you know, in Waterford, or wherever they're currently located. So that's something we'll have to look at on a case-by-case basis, based on, you know, whether or not that particular retailer would be so close to another location, or even a competing location, where they couldn't potentially enter the market. Like I said, I, I do think that you guys are targets for some of those. I don't want to go on the record and say that, you know, Trader Joe's is, you know, waiting next week to locate, but at the same time, I do think that some of those would be worth reaching out to, and I think the data would support that they could make money there. We just, we need to get our game plan together, and also find out from the constituents, would you shop here? Because at the end of the day, I mean, I'm relying on data where none of this has really happened. We haven't built a Trader Joe's in Groton. So there's really no way to say for sure that if we did, they would patronize it, but I suspect they would. It's just convincing retailers of that is sometimes very difficult.
All right, thank you.
So we have Councilors Baumgartner and Aubrey in the queue. Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Casey, for your presentation. There's great questions from Counselor Franco. I know she's been very interested in these issues. So thank you also, Counselor Franco, for that. Quickly, Casey, I was wondering if you could go back to the slide for, with respect to categories lagging in the recovery?
Scroll back up here. Did you mean the one with the specifically retail, or just overall?
Overall for Groton.
Is this the one you're talking about?
Yeah. And, and just to go back, you know, or did you notice any? You had mentioned that this is sort of an average over those three months, but do you, is there any, any way the town will be able to kind of look at data and be able to kind of look at those months specifically as to what the, you know, how many of these businesses performed during the summer, as, you know, they are seasonal, and, and I think, and in some cases, really peak in July. And I'd be very curious to see, you know, how they're doing compared to, you know, now as well. So, you know, I, I love the, you know, obviously, the amount of data you're using in your research. I think it's very helpful, you know, breaking it down this way, makes it understandable for me, and certainly, I think, for the public as well, to better understand the economic conditions of our town. You know, sort of anecdotally, many people have, you know, Groton has experienced a big shift in that, you know, there are many new people who have moved to our community. You know, there is a, you know, as you knew, Casey, we're almost equidistant between Boston and New York. And I know a lot of the folks in the big city wanted, you know, are looking for an alternative to, you know, New York City at this time, and, and, you know, saw our region as a, you know, a reasonable, happy medium to their, accommodating their needs with, obviously, their, you know, you know, their lifestyle needs. And so nonetheless, just kind of maybe to kick it to you, Paige, you know, I'd be curious to hear what some, what you're hearing on the ground from some of these businesses. And, you know, for the sectors that, you know, if you compare it to previous years, that, you know, for the sectors that have experienced issues this year because of COVID, do you see a silver lining or any, you know, hope for the future? I know that was a lot, so maybe, you know, you know, however you decide to answer that question, Paige.
I think it's a mixed bag, actually. The largest industry sector that we're really concerned about is restaurants. Without really going down that, that discussion, I think it's, it's obvious. You can, you can see how they've been trying to react, and maybe some people think that the outdoor dining has been working for them, really, for most of them, unless they're a takeout model alone. But if you're a standard restaurant, the outdoor dining is just kind of covering your bills, and here comes the weather change. So we're really concerned about that. Retail seems to be doing okay. Small manufacturing, we have seen some hits in 2020 in Groton. You know, aerospace-related, obviously, we know the story with General Dynamics Electric Boat. They, they're moving forward like, like no worries. But I, I think it is a mixed bag. There isn't necessarily one answer. And even pre-COVID, the retail sector, if, if you really watched it over the past few years, it's been changing significantly. And some people have said that the COVID phenomenon actually was more of a catalyst in pushing retail in a direction that it was already heading. So look at Mystic as an example. Most of the very small specialized retailers are doing fairly well. But your larger retailers elsewhere, they're the ones that have, that have suffered. So I think retail as an industry, even without COVID, was going through a pretty significant change. But we look at it as an opportunity. You know, Casey talked about switching issues to opportunities, and we do need to target those retailers that are growing, that are looking for maybe a smaller footprint, or a certain customer base. They are out there, and I, I think there are opportunities to convert some of our retail areas and add. And I, I think there are opportunities to convert some of our retail areas, uh, and add some of that new energy and new investment from the growing retailers.
You know, and Paige, I'm glad you mentioned that because, um, I know Casey had, um, offered that fun factoid about, um, you know, the two different restaurant chains, I think Olive Garden and, uh, what was the other restaurant?
Buffalo Wild Wings.
Yeah, Buffalo Wild Wings. And, um, you know, what was absent from that list was, uh, you know, have you visited, um, uh, you know, the Sift or Pizzetta or, you know, um, and I, I say that because, um, even before, you know, last year, we didn't have, uh, you know, Young Buns, uh, Donuts, right? And in this year, post pandemic, not only do we have, have that business, but it's been very successful and they've been selling out. Um, and so, you know, I, there have been, I think, a lot of silver linings to come out of this. And, um, you know, I think it is important to obviously highlight our strengths in that, you know, um, we also have several businesses that have been successful despite, you know, the global, a global pandemic. But I, you know, again, Paige, hats off to you. This is really great work and thank you Casey. Um, and, um, you know, I think the more the public is informed about, again, the economic conditions of our town, the better. And anything the council can do to, you know, obviously improve the business climate for, um, you know, our small businesses, especially during this time should be, um, welcome. So, um, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you Paige.
Thank you. We have, um, Counsel Aubrey heat, and then I wish to speak as well. So Counsel Aubrey, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention to Casey, he probably should, uh, take a look at the two new small chain restaurants we have in Groton that are doing extremely well. Uh, we had a, um, and I can't remember the name of both of them. I've been to them. But anyways, um, Jersey Mike's and, um, thank you. But I mean, there's a line there. Now that might just be because they're new, but I think they're both going to do very, very well. And so it'd be something to look at. I'm just wondering, in all this information that you have here, I know we're basically looking at retail, but, I look at all the empty office space. And I'm wondering if there's any part of this that's going to look to how we help people that have been carrying empty buildings for quite a while now. And, and it's even harder now to, um, find occupants because everybody's working at home. And, uh, no matter what you have, uh, offered, there's really not any, any real need for it. How do you, how do you converge your philosophy on, you know, what you're really offering?
Well, at the end of the day, I think there's just going to be a lot of adapting happening. And I can't say for sure what that's even going to look like, especially, uh, where we are now, just because this is like something we've never seen before. That having been said, um, I know that there are, there are real estate developers out there and, and users that are finding uses for spaces they wouldn't have normally, um, been interested in. So I can't say for sure that the office space would be, you know, at the top of their list, but, you know, if there's a way to advertise that or, or frame that in a light where they would potentially be interested, that's something we're definitely going to be doing. It's, it's, everyone's trying to figure out where they stand and, you know, and, and how they're going to move forward right now. That it's been very difficult even for us with the data that we have to navigate, what is it going to look like in 12 months? And what's it going to look like in 24 months? And so, um, even in one of our client cities right now, they had an old indoor mall. And right now, as you know, the indoor malls are not, you know, faring the best. They haven't been faring well even before the pandemic. But Amazon's converting it into a fulfillment center. And so I'm not, you know, at, at the end of the day, I, I definitely would be caught on the record saying go Amazon, but at the same time, if it allows you to fill that space and use that space in a meaningful way, um, that produces rent for that developer, then obviously that's something they'll be interested in doing. So we're seeing things like that happen across the nation. It's just taking time for them to, to adapt their model to these sorts of scenarios. And so I don't think that that's an impossible task. I just think that, you know, we've got to get to a more, you know, a normal state to be able to figure out, you know, is this a space that so and so would be interested? And so we'll definitely keep that in mind, um, and, and definitely keep those potential like spaces, um, in, in our sites as far as like developer targeting and even potential in user targeting.
Thank you very much. You too Paige.
Um, Counsel Heed, you're next, please.
Oh, thanks. My question is more or less than answered by, uh, uh, Counsel Baumgartner and Counsel Aubrey's questions. But I guess, uh, the only thing I could go further on is just to figure out, are they only talk, targeting, like chain retailers or chain companies? And is it just the, like, they'll build an Olive Garden or Cheesecake Factory or something and they'll employ a few people, but they take the revenues out of town. So is it, um, are they also targeting, uh, like headquarters or, uh, supplies depots or, or something like that, that, that brings revenue, more revenue into the town? Like is, is it enough to just go after a restaurant?
So we do primarily target the, you know, the chain sector, and that's primarily just because they are more apt to expanding in a town that they're not already in. And also, um, you know, it's, you show them a good deal and where they can make money and they do it. Right now, reaching out to some of the local mom and pops or even regional mom and pop type businesses is difficult just because those are the very ones that are struggling right now. Even the chains are struggling. I'm not here to say that they're doing all well too, but at the same time, they're a little more resilient, you know, because of their corporate structure to being able to continue expanding throughout a pandemic. So obviously they are kind of at our, at the top of our list. One thing we encourage the community to think about is what we're ultimately doing is not trying to take away revenue from anyone. It's to give people more reason to be in Groton. So if you, you look back at my, uh, my slide about the, um, the trade area in Groton, which I think is about 72,000 people. You know, we expect this number to only go up because this is based on the current reasons that people have been in Groton. They, they don't have any more reasons than they currently have to be in Groton. Now, as we add more reasons such as, you know, even industries, uh, that might locate there, or even, uh, a new restaurant or a clothing store, we've given them one more reason to be in Groton throughout their day, which, in which they could potentially spend retail dollars. So what we hope to do is bring more retail into Groton so that that traffic does follow. If we were to bring a major retailer like Lowe's or Home Depot, or even, you know, uh, you know, not Walmart, I know you guys have a Walmart, but that type of retailer, it drives traffic. I know a lot of mom and pop type, type of businesses see that as a threat, but it's not. I mean, you can look at it as a threat if you want, but, you know, Walmart would generate, you know, a hundred thousand people coming to it, you know, in a year's time. So when you think about that, my goal would be to get as close as I could to that Walmart, so I could potentially capture some of that traffic going to that retail location. So I, I don't want the community to view it as, you know, we're trying to take revenue away from the local businesses, but more so, let's give, you know, 80,000 more people a reason to be in Groton, so that those dollars could be potentially spent at their business or their place of business.
Yes, absolutely. I wasn't in, in any way suggesting that we were trying to steal from, from anyone else. I was just asking about, uh, about, well, you answered it. Thank you.
Um, so I'm going to jump in with a comment at this point. This is all very interesting and some kind of, um, nerdy facts that are interesting to hear about in your community because you don't think of them, um, while you're living your daily life here. The thing that is going off in my head is the balance between, um, wanting to draw in these new chain type, big box stores, restaurants, et cetera. And we just heard how our local people with their small businesses are struggling. So I, I think it's going to be really important to try to find a balance, um, to, to be able to help our local business owners and bring in the right type of chain that will not, as, as kind of, um, the last couple of speakers have said, that won't necessarily harm or pull customers or revenue from those small business owners that we value so much, right? So, and then I'm not sure how you do this. This is not my expertise. But how do you find that balance to, to support your local businesses while also bringing in new bigger box? And the other quick thing is, um, you know, we have Waterford that has a lot of these big box places. And, um, you know, people like Groton because we don't have a lot of that. They'd be happy to drive there, but I don't necessarily know that people want a Lowe's here or they want an Olive Garden here, right? I think they might rather go to a local restaurant. That's not to say, you know, I'm opposed to these bigger developments coming in. It's just got to be that balance to be able to preserve the character of the community and preserve the local small business owners while also reinvigorating, um, the economy.
Well, and I think a lot of that too, might go back to the survey that I mentioned in asking the constituents, what would you like to see here? And, um, there was a client of ours, uh, the other day that sent me an email and said that they've got every, every person in the town essentially emailing them, asking for a, a company called Rule King. And I had never even heard of it, but it's essentially like a, kind of like a tractor supply company. They carry like feed, seed, you know, farm implements, that sort of thing. But, um, I said, sure, you know, we'll reach out to them. And I found a point of contact and I reached out and we're currently in talks with them for this client. But, um, it really took the town saying, hey, we really want this particular retailer here. And so I'm not saying that we don't have data that shows what would work, but as you just stated, you know, we've got all these type of places in Waterford that people are happy to drive to. So if that's not the type of retailer that they would like to see, then, you know, well, then tell me what types of retailers you would like to see. And, and we could potentially reach out to them and entice them to open a location in Groton. And so we're not opposed to doing it in either two ways. It's just, it has been more common for us to reach out on, on the basis that you do meet their criteria and they would, you know, be able to make money there. But at the same time, that's why we call it a retail wish list, you know? We want to, we want to hear from the community, what would you, what do you wish you had, um, that you don't currently have? And start from there.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Bordelain is next.
Uh, thank you. Um, first I just wanted to thank, uh, you for such a wonderful presentation. It was very informative. Um, I actually sat through something not quite like this today, but, um, from a medical standpoint, but, the outcomes of the numbers and things are very similar of just like looking at the data. So it's very interesting today to do that all in the same day. With that, I, I can agree with, with a lot of the counselors that have spoke, spoken tonight and the reference to, um, making sure there's a bit of a balance. You know, growing up here, but also, you know, um, even though we were from here, you know, for a time being a military family as well, uh, and living in that community, um, looking at the needs, um, one of the biggest, the, the biggest things everyone would say is they always would complain about what we didn't have here and what they were used to having, where they came from. And so looking at our dynamic population of active duty military retiree, because we have a naval base, we have Pfizer, we have EB, and the list goes on, that foot traffic, traffic that comes through here at any given time is expansive. Um, and the looking at that disposable income, I'm thinking like pre, pre-kids and thinking like what life was like, even though the number might've been lower. But you had less of a demand, um, in the household, um, as far as, um, well, we didn't have four cell phones. I don't even think we had cable back then, but I guess what I'm trying to say is there was more disposable income or equal to. So even looking at some of your numbers with the age range, um, I, I kind of am interested also to see that, um, 25 to 40-year-old range, um, to look at that, I mean, uh, the needs of that population, I think, are also really important in attractiveness. The younger generation that comes in, they have, they have a different need of what they want to see to make that town Groton or whatever town their home and.
I think Counsel Bordelain is frozen. Let's give it a second and see if it comes back. Okay. We will, I see Counsel Franco has her hand. I wanted to give the opportunity to any other counselors who have not spoken yet. Anyone else who has not spoken yet wish to speak first before we go back to second time?
Third.
Counsel Melendez? No. Counsel Parker?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, and then let me just see if Counsel Bordelain is back before I yield the floor. I saw she, um, she logged out. Counsel Franco, you have the floor. If Counsel Bordelain comes back, I would like to give her the opportunity to jump in as well.
All right, thank you. So when I was growing up in Groton, um, Groton was the hub of shopping in southeastern Connecticut, basically. It was the place that everybody came to. We had all the restaurants. We had all the shopping. Other towns didn't have this. And for reasons beyond me at the, at the moment, I don't know why, but other towns seem to, um, change and they, um, opened up things and, and welcomed all this shopping and sort of Groton was sort of left behind. And, um, so my question is like, how do we get back there to where we are, the bustling town again, where are downtown Groton? Because what, when I go out and knock doors, um, what I'm hearing from constituents is Mystic is fine. They're not worried about Mystic. They have great shopping. They have tons of restaurants now and everything seems to be just great in downtown Mystic. Everybody's worried about downtown Groton. And they, what they're telling me is that downtown Groton needs help, a lot of help. And that's what they look to us as a council is trying to resolve and to help, um, bring back that, the glory days. And I understand that you have private owners who own these, you know, you know, plazas and, and property. But how do we turn that corner and bring all this back? I mean, we were literally the, the shopping little oasis here in our, our side of the state and we've lost it. And, um, want to try and bring it back. And I can tell you this, um, and it's, I don't like to compare Groton to other towns. But when you do travel and you go to other towns, you see, like I'm in a town right now with the same kind of population as Groton. And the amount of shopping here is insane. I mean, it's like mom and pops all over the place, small businesses. And then you have all kinds of major retail that are very name recognition. And the amount of shopping here is like, whatever you want, you can find here, everything and anything. And how do we bring that back to Groton? I don't know why it's, it hasn't happened yet. And what we're not doing, or what we have to do to bring this back. I'm, and it seems like such a slow process. I mean, like we're, we're, our whole town's so excited because we've got Jersey Mike's and Chipotle in one building. And I mean, everybody's busting at the seams, excited over this, and the lines are enormous and they're creating traffic things. And I mean, like, and it, I just don't understand how we are where we are and how to get to where we need to be.
Well, you know, to speak to that, you know, I, all I have to answer that would just be my experience with other towns. If I had, you know, a solution to that problem, I'd, I'd definitely be a lot wealthier than I am. But, um, at the same time, we find that, um, at, at some point in time, something has happened. Now, that's not the same for each town. It's, every town has had something at some point in time that has been the catalyst for, you know, a town to kind of go away as far as retail is concerned. That having been said, retail is very cyclical. Um, it follows a lot of very predictable cycles. I'm not saying that I could predict the future, especially with COVID in the mix, but at the same time, there's some things I expect will happen. It's just, it's a yet another cycle. We're already seeing that everyone wants to live in a downtown, you know? And that's what my generation wants to do. We want to be in a downtown area. I live five minutes here from downtown Fort Worth and the reason being is because I love the downtown area. So I think you're going to see that boom come back, especially right now, because you have so many people flocking out of the city. But at the same time, you, you answered Joan's question saying that it's just, it's so slow and you're correct, it is so slow. It's, it's like, it's snail's pace, you know, for anything concerning retail, just because real estate development in general happens slowly. We've seen the retail timeline even being drawn out further just because they were already cautious before COVID because of the online thing. Now it's even more cautious than they were before because of COVID. So, you know, I, I, we're not, definitely not giving up. At the same time, it just creates. At the same time, it just creates a very slow process for having these talks. The other side to that is that, you know, there's always a next best thing or there's always a new place to go and there's always a new type of development. And I'm not mocking them because, you know, that's our livelihood too. But at the same time, it's almost like, you know, you see these memes on social media and go through changes with, you know, what meme is popular right now? And there's these influencers that change that. Well, the same thing really does happen in real estate. We see it before our very eyes that there are influencers in real estate that really do control what the hottest thing this year is. And, you know, 10 years ago, it was called power centers. Everybody wanted a power center. And it would be my estimate that we're that Olive Garden and that Buffalo Wild Wings is probably sitting in what we call a power center. And it was probably built about 10 to 15 years ago. And the reason being is that was the hot thing back then. Now the hot thing is trying to do a more urban development where you're doing it in a downtown area. And so it's a cycle that once existed coming back. And I wish I could expedite it, make it happen faster. But at the same time, we expect to see these things happen. Our goal and part of what we do for a living is to figure out what is the current trend and how does that fit with what you guys have to offer or even what you want for that matter. And I'm not saying that I could answer all your, you know, questions to solve all your problems. But at the same time, we do have a pulse on the market and what's happening. And so that does allow us to do a little bit more, I guess, targeted marketing towards these retailers and the retail developers.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Thank you very much. I think we've had the presentations and there's a lot of information to digest. And I know there are some things that we can work with, with Mr. Bronck to help move things forward. So Mr. Kidd and Mr. Boucher, thank you so much for your presentations this evening. We appreciate your time and your energy. At this point, it is 9:05. We have four or five more items to get through. But we're going to take a five-minute break. So five minutes, we're going to start back up at 9:10, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back from recess. So 9:05 to 9:10 recess. We are starting with item 5C, 2027-13 Children First Library Space Use Agreement. And this is page 18 in your packet. And I believe Counselor Parker would be moving this, please. Thank you.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the Children First First Library Space Use Agreement with Groton Public Library and authorize Town Manager John Burt to execute said document. I so move.
All right, we have quite a few guests with us this evening. We have Sue Corriez from Children First. And I believe Jen Mealy, Director Mealy is here from the library. Mr. Burt, did you wish to speak to this?
Just to mention that Counselor Melendez first brought this to us. He serves on with the Board of Groton Early Childhood Council, I believe. They're looking for space, as you can see in the handout. And we have Susan Corris here to explain the need. And then Jen Mealy is here to talk about how that space fits in at the library.
Thank you. Counselor Melendez, did you wish to address this, sir, since you brought this to our attention?
Yeah, yeah. Like the manager said, I was at a meeting and we were discussing sort of a need for an office space that would help them, you know, work more efficiently. And I brought to the town manager to ask if there was a space in the town they could use and the library quickly volunteered a tiered a space. So we were sort of just waiting for all the COVID to reopen the library and now we're here.
Wonderful. Thank you for making that connection between the organization and the town. That's much appreciated. Are there questions for Ms. Corris or for the Director Mealy?
Guess we're all feeling pretty good with it.
Right. It's a very worthy program.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no quote, Counselors of Perry, you have the floor. Counselors of Perry, did you wish to speak?
I said, I'm probably the least informed member of the council. So it would help me to understand some things. And I'll give you all of my questions at one time. What does Children First do? How do they do it? Do they do things that are not already being done by our public schools? And how much space do you need in the library? Those are my questions.
Thank you, Counselors of Perry. So we'll go to Ms. Corris for that, please, if you don't mind fielding those questions from the counselor.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
So first of all, Children First Groton has been around for over 20 years. And we've sort of evolved with the needs in Groton. Our partners include members you just actually mentioned. We have obviously members from town council there and the mayor's representative. But we also have from the city, we have the fire departments from town and city, we have the superintendent. So a lot of our partners are actually major collaborators in Groton, making things happen. But what sometimes happens is that with the connection we're able to make with other community members, directly with parents, directly with nonprofits, businesses, needs may come forward that we're able to meet more directly because we obviously are, you know, a collaborative agency and we don't have to go through as many bureaucratic levels of process to get things to happen. So we create initiatives and they always benefit education, health, safety, mental health, and just overall diversity in the town. But we do partner. So when you asked about whether we duplicate, what we choose to do is partner, collaborate, and then not duplicate. So for example, Children First Groton is able to write for grants because we use Child and Family Agency as a nonprofit. And we write our grants for the town, for things that benefit the town. So an example of a collaboration that doesn't duplicate, Groton Public Schools and Human Services are providing food to children birth through, or, you know, school age through 18 years of age through their breakfast and lunch program right now for COVID. But there was a gap for families with children that were older or adults or families that just are not able to get to the food program to pick up. And so we partner with the Groton Senior Center, the Groton Town Police, the city police, and with Parks and Rec to write some grants. And we have received about, I believe we've received just as of today, $8,000 to buy food to be distributed at the community meals programs. So we don't duplicate, but we try to just enhance what you're doing already. And with Groton Public Schools, the same thing. The superintendent has a designee at our table and we work together on things. So we were able to, last year with the mayor, with town council, with the Board of Ed, write for a fairly large grant together that we could receive on behalf of the needs of the families of the town that wouldn't necessarily go through the municipality. So I don't know if that answers your question there. Before I go on to space questions, is that okay, Counselor Zepperary?
Yes, I've got a little better view. I was just looking specifically, you do food programs and you feed elderly as well as older children beyond the age of 18. Do you do anything other than that?
Yes, so good question. I'm sorry. I should tell you that we do, we have work groups in all those areas of education, safety, health, mental health. And each one of those is doing lots of different initiatives. So some of the ones you might have heard of were, we have a Groton Go program where it's a passport where kids over the summer go out and they do all kinds of educational and recreational things to try to keep families active in the community. That was through DCF and trying to build protective factors so that families weren't isolated and kids were able to get out and do things regardless of their economic situation. We provide books to the pediatrician's offices, the pediatrician's offices that will allow us to to each child for their well visits. So we do thousands of dollars of books to help with literacy. For health, we do a Cooking Matters program. We've been doing that remotely during COVID, but it generally happens through the schools. We use the sites at night and we teach families and children to cook together and eat healthy meals to try to learn to battle obesity. So we do a lot with health. Mental health, we've had six different mental health summits through the public schools and brought in speakers to try to work on mental health. And most recently, we've done remote mental health supports for parents of young children as to how to deal with COVID and how to deal with being isolated at home and doing school learning. So we buy car seats and give them to the two police departments because the police departments don't have access necessarily to the car seats. So when they do car seat safety checks or there's an accident and somebody's car seat needs replacing right there at the accident, they have access to those. So lots of different things like that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I almost called you by your first name. Director Mealy, would you like to address the space concern, please?
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I just want to notate that Children's First has been a very strong partner, longstanding partner with our library for many reasons. They not only help us with many of the children programs that we have, but they're also, one thing that Sue is kind enough not to address is that they also review a lot of the preschool programs. And we're advocates of early literacy, very much so. And they are just an amazing advocate for this purpose. So we are happy to offer a space for them. They continually use our big meeting space for their meetings. But I think this is advantageous for them to conduct some of their work in the background, including grant work and file retention. And I think this is just a great collaborative, you know, group effort for us to have them at the library. And I just, I'm thrilled that Counselor Melendez has reached out to us to ask us for this.
So I believe it said, Meeting Room Six, is that correct? So it's a small.
It's a small meeting room. And what I can tell you about that too is I don't want this to look as it will be taking away space from any of our public use. This particular area was used exclusively for a lot of our library local history archives. But we've since removed it to the back office. And so this room is going to be utilized for not only Children's First Brian, but we also utilize, we're going to utilize a space for our community policing officer that makes weekly visits. So it's going to be a shared use and definitely a great use for the community.
Thank you, Director Mealy, for addressing that. So we have Counselor Franco and Melendez.
Thank you. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that I noticed in the lease and with possibly John Burt. So it's a, for rent or lease, it'll be a dollar a year. We're going to go on a one-year lease term with renewal opportunities. They'll supply their own furniture. They'll have all their own insurance, like workers' comp, general liability, and auto. And this is going to be for administration work. It's not going to be performing any kind of work with children or outside, if I think I read it correctly, is that all correct?
Correct. And one thing I did want to mention is that Children First Groton doesn't have its own insurance. We're a collaborative, but our fiduciary is Child and Family Agency. And they are willing to provide the insurance for this with the town or the library, whatever's indicated there as the additionally insured. And then Children First will incur the cost of paying for that insurance every year. So that's definitely new.
All right, great. Thank you. And thank you for all you do for Groton.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez.
Yes, I just wanted to sort of also add that there's what's called a School Readiness Council, which every town has to have by state statute and which is supposed to help with education from birth through five years old. And sort of Groton was sort of blessed to have this longstanding group called Children First Groton working in Groton. So we sort of use them to act as our School Readiness Council. So in addition to sort of being. So, so in addition to sort of being this organization that we need to have, the School Readiness Council, that works from birth through five, which Groton Public Schools does not cover, right? We also have this organization that other towns don't have that sort of goes out and gets grants that other towns would miss out on and we would miss out on if we didn't have them. So you might remember earlier this year, they were awarded a $30,000 grant. And later on this year, they're hoping to get a grant even larger than that. So this organization sort of brings tens of thousands of dollars a year at minimum into Groton. And it's sort of a group that not a lot of other towns have. So I think any, any, any way we can help them save money. So you say they're renting for a dollar a year. And anytime we help them save money, it just sort of helps them put those dollars into educating the youth of Groton.
Thank you, Counsel Melendez, very well said. Counsel Bordelain.
Thank you. I know a lot about this program and I think it's excellent. Are you guys still working collaboratively with Leg Light Health District as well?
Yes, thank you, that's a great question. I didn't list them as one of our partners, but they are. Clearly, right now, COVID is their focus. So we have two members of Leg Light that attend. One attends our safety work group meeting. That's Carolyn from GASP. And then the other member is Cindy Berry, who goes to the health work group meeting. But technically, the School Readiness Councils, as Counsel and Melendez says, are required to have a connection to the local health department. So they have been for 20 years, they've been the partner that we have worked with for that.
That's great to hear. I think more than ever, I'm a big advocate for human resources and anything that's going to benefit the town at large. I think it's really important to have these resources, especially with the current state of our economy. So looking at achievement gaps and the access to education right now, even though Groton is doing a wonderful job with, you know, supplying technology. Unfortunately, Groton can't supply parents home all day. And we're going to see some possible gaps that we're not, you know, really ready for. And these types of programs, people are struggling to, you know, go to work and provide a good education for their kids while they're not home. And these programs like this are going to really need to be in place. So I think it's a no-brainer. So, but thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And as Counsel Melendez says, anything we can do to help, I support. Counsel Franco has her hand up. Are there any counselors who haven't spoken yet that wish to speak before we go to second time speakers? Counsel Franco.
I just wanted to reply to Counselor Melendez. When I had mentioned the dollar a year, I was just going through a list of items that I had pulled out of the lease to make note of. Your interpretation of what I said may have been misconstrued as I did not take it as a negative at all. I was just simply stating items from the lease, thank you.
Is there any other question? Counsel Bordelain has her hand. Is there another, any first time speakers? Counsel Bordelain.
Thank you. I just forgot to add my one other piece. Looking at this, I think it's a pretty, you know, it's a well-written lease and I understand. But looking at it, I guess, I just want to put on the record because other people might not see this in front of them, the insurance, you know, there's some protection of coverage that they have to have to rent this space. Is that my understanding?
That is true. It's what we require in all our contracts. And just to mention, this contract is almost exact to the one we did with the Sonic Ridge Fire for the annex space.
Thank you, Mr. Bird, for clarifying.
So we're responsible, because it's our building, so we're responsible for like the repairs and the, all the logistic part. But I guess it's just important for people to know, like they're carrying insurance. It's just not like, you know, the dollar and there's a lengthy, you know, responsibility and obligation here, which I think is nice. So thank you.
Okay, I'm seeing no other hands. So we will vote on 2027-13 Children First Library Space Use Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you, Ms. Corus and Director Mealy, for bearing with us through the long presentation earlier.
Thank you. Mayor, can I just throw something out there? I just wanted to alert everybody that as we were talking about COVID, there is going to be another Yale-New Haven Health COVID testing at the senior center this Friday. We just determined that today. We, I believe it's going to be nine to three as standard times that we have done in the past. But I just wanted to, you know, throw it out there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, we are on to 2027-19 Hepa Tax Assessment Stabilization Agreement on page 23. And I believe we are on to Counsel Franco, please. Let's see, where's the draft motion? No action taken.
Yeah, I don't see the motion.
This is for some just initial discussion.
Correct, thank you. Who wants to lead this? Mr. Bird, are you leading this or is, let's see who's here? Director Landry?
I'll let her, just because she's more familiar with the background. She's been dealing with this in the past.
Thank you.
And just to mention, we did invite a HIPAA or HEPAA's representatives, but we never heard back from them.
Thank you. So Director Landry, thank you again for being with us and waiting through the presentation. What can you tell us about the assessment agreement?
Okay, back in 1995, when HEPAA had become the owners of the property on Drauzdick Drive, and you probably all know where this piece of property is. And they had approached the town looking for some type of tax break benefit while they built that property, which is for age 62, low and moderate income people. And that was, the council did vote for that and that was in 1995 and it had four, five-year term extensions. But it clearly stated that it was to terminate no more than 25 years, which that date was June 30 of 2020. And at that time, that agreement is now null and void. And recently, I believe back in July, HEPAA had reached out to the town manager and requested that that agreement be reinstated or renewed. But since it's null and void, a brand-new agreement would be necessary. So I had provided a few considerations for the council, should you decide to move forward with this. I would recommend, because in 1995, it was considered a tax abatement, which meant a portion of their taxes are abated. We bill them, they're not required to pay them. That's a simplistic way of explaining an abatement. Should the council want to move forward with this, I would recommend that we go forward with a fixed assessment agreement, which sets the amount of taxes, sets the assessment at which they would pay taxes on. And that is a fairly new provision of the statutes. And we've used that in the past for several other businesses. I believe it was used, just, I'm sorry, the name just dropped right out of my head. Hopefully it'll come back to me and I can tell you. There were two others that we have used at, oh, Silver Oaks. Silver Oak that's down off of Wells Road. I don't know if you're familiar with that. Was a fixed assessment agreement. I'm sorry, my mind is just fried there for a minute. But anyway, so I've given you some considerations about, should you decide to move forward with this? And one of the reasons we thought that HEPAA might join us was to kind of give, is there still a financial need for this? We do realize that back in 1995, when they were trying to, you know, start up and build the building, that there very likely was. And they've had that for the past 25 years. But it's, there are other low to moderate income housing units that do not receive any type of a tax break. So it's really kind of a policy decision for the council of whether they want to move forward with this. But if they did, I would suggest that we change it from an abatement to a fixed assessment agreement. And I have another reason for doing that is when we abate taxes, it's not taken into account for the mil, for the grand list. The grand list is not reduced. So in other words, we set the mil rate, we bill for taxes that we know we're never going to receive because the taxpayer is just not billed. So with a fixed assessment, when we set the mil rate, that's taken into account. But any abatement or fixed assessment that we give to any taxpayer, someone has to pay for that. So I think that's kind of a little bit of a nutshell of maybe too much information for you, but I'm open to any questions, hopefully that can answer for you.
Thank you. So Mr. Bird and Director Landry, tonight you are looking to get a consensus of the council as to whether we wish to proceed with the fixed assessment agreement, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And again, I need to mention, I had invited them to attend, told them that they would need to explain the financial need and I've not heard back from them.
Okay, very good. So just so the counselors are aware, the council is aware, they are, the town staff is looking for direction from us. So the manager and Director Landry need some direction. So if you could offer your opinion, and we're all going to have to chime in here as to what we, what we are thinking so that they are aware of how to proceed. So Counselors of Perry has his hand up first, please.
I agree with Cindy Landry that we should know that there's a definite need. And to that end, the information that we don't have here is, one, is AFA, a 501(c)(3) corporation. Two, can we see a profit-loss statement for the last year? Three, can we see statements from bank accounts for the last year? And then we would have an idea whether or not they need support from the town in the form of a tax abatement. And also the extent of public service they're doing. They have, you know, who are the people that they have? Are they all people who are poor? Or are they mixed population in that, their housing? What do those people pay? These are things that come to mind. But as we have this request here, I don't see a basis for approving it. If AFA would like to come forward with more information, I'd like to see it.
Thank you, Counselors of Perry. We'll go to Counsel Heed and then I'll ask the council's opinion on something. Counsel Heed.
I agree, I see no reason to extend this. I think 25 years for an abatement is plenty long. Usually, the reason why you would do an abatement is to enable a company that's starting up to sort of mitigate some of the risks that they're, that they have to go through, especially during the building phase, for example. And there are several other facilities in Groton, as noted from in the notes here. But in addition, I mean, we're not talking about giving abatements to every senior in Groton or to anybody who has some sort of a challenge going on. So, you know, I think the 25 years was more than generous to begin with. And I think at this point, it's time to move on and look at something else.
Okay, before we go to anyone else, I wanted to know how many counselors are in agreement with Counselors of Perry that they would need more information before making a decision? Could I just see a show of hands if people want to be able to see more information? One, so Counsel Franco, Counsel Obray, Counsel Bordelain, Counsel of Perry, Counsel, or Mayor Granatoski, Counsel Parker as well. Okay. So then, Mr. Bird, I think at this point then, if you can use the questions that Counselors of Perry stated, if Ms. Hilton could provide those to you and you could see if the organization is willing to provide those answers for us and come back to us at a later date, then the council will take a look at this and consider at that point. Is that acceptable, Mr. Bird?
Yes, I've written down the questions. I also would like to see the, kind of what shape the units are in to see if they're reinvesting and to keep them up. That'd be something I'd be interested in.
Very good. Do any other counselors have other questions that they would like answered? We've decided at this point that we're not going to decide tonight. We've decided that Mr. Bird and Director Landry are going to go fact-finding for us. So what we're looking for now are additional questions that you need to have answered. So I saw Counsel Obray's hand and Counsel Bordelain.
I was just wondering, is what Cindy is suggesting, is that kind of what we did with the Colonial Manor? Where we had a fixed assessment?
Um, are you thinking of Branford Manor?
Yeah.
No, actually, Branford Manor is more of less of an abatement. It's not a fixed assessment. It was more, Branford Manor was looking for, they called it a stabilization. They wanted to know exactly how much their taxes were, they were going to pay over the, over the course of the span of time. So that was why it was called a stabilization agreement. We set the taxes that they are billed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Counsel Bordelain, what question did you have for Mr. Bird to find the answer to, please?
I just wanted to agree with Tom Manager Burt. I'd love to see the condition of the, you know, the facilities after 25 years and see what we are, you know. And if there's some type of tour or maybe slideshow or pictures or something that, you know, maybe can come before us or I think that would be important to see. I would say that, you know, on the record, you know, having worked with HUD and nonprofit agencies trying to get people affordable housing, and, you know, looking at the age on here, once again, during this time, there's a need. But with what's in front of us, I do agree, I need some more information. And I'd love to like see the standing where everything is. And I think Counselors of Perry had some great questions too. Just would like to see more of the package. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bird, for getting that information for us. We are on to 5E 2020-697 Preliminary Results of Operations FYE 2020, unaudited. And this began on page 37, and this is why Director Landry's been waiting.
Right. Annual.
Thank you for your, for being here with us. And the floor is yours, ma'am.
Yeah, it was interesting to listen to the, all of the earlier meeting. As I do, as I come to you every year, I'm here with the preliminary results of operations for fiscal 2020. We are in the midst of our audit, which has to be filed with the state of Connecticut by the end of December. The auditors are working very hard to get us a draft, which we normally get in November. But we did have another good year. And the information that I've provided you, the expenditures came in under budget by 1.9 million. And just a few, I have a few, you have the detail there. I just wanted a couple of highlights I wanted to give you. On the town of that 1.9, town departments returned 1.3 million. And that was 172,000 from the police, 694,000 from public works, and community services was 126,000. Town operations, which includes insurances and contributions to other funds, returned 1.2 million. The Board of Education returned 52,000. And outside agencies, which was primarily the VNA due to COVID, since they were not in the schools, they returned $363,000. On the revenue side, we exceeded the budget by 1.4 million. And in my referral, I've given a little bit more detail by category, but I'll just touch on some of the highlights. The taxes were $400,000 under budget. The state grants, which include the special ed, was over $404,000. And that was attributed to special education. The state grants that are general was over by 608,000. And that was primarily for the municipal project grant that when we put the budget together, that was slated to be caught in the state's budget, but ultimately it was not. And pupil impact aid, again, came in over budget. We got an additional $607,000. And there was an additional amount that we received for 2019. Now, you know, we had put together the budget last year. We were going to use 1.095, $1,095,000 of fund balance. Now, you know, we had put together the budget last year, we were going to use 1.095, $1,095,000 of fund balance. But fortunately, because the revenues have come in over and expenditures are under, we have, we will not need to use that money. That will be returned to that, in addition to the additional funding. So I provided you as one of the, one of your attachments is the analysis of the fund balance. So when we set the mill rate, I had anticipated that it was going to be at 19%, and it is ultimately going to be at 20% with the additional funding return being returned to the fund balance. And that's a short little recap, but I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I had a.
Okay, we have Council Obray, Zeperry, and Bordelain.
Yeah, I'm trying to find where I saw it. I was surprised by the number being lower on the recording fees, I believe it was.
Maybe it was conveyance tax?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, conveyance tax.
And, you know, as the town clerk says every year, conveyance tax is really based on the sale of the real estates. And, and, you know, we had lost the distressed municipality. When we put this budget together, she had talked about how we wouldn't only get that extra little percent from the state anymore. But that's always a, a hard target for them to estimate. But we are down a little bit because the level of real estate that we had expected just didn't happen by June 30th.
So you must, you must anticipate a pretty big bump then for the next quarter?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by a big bump. You expect us to?
Well, our market went from being just a general market to an extreme.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because of the housing market has, with COVID and people moving in. Likely so. I haven't prepared the quarterly report for as of September. But you're right, we could see a bump up to offset that deficit from last year. Depends on what happens for the rest of the nine months of the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilors of Perry?
I just wanted to say kudos to our town manager and to the team that he has working for him. This is a good report for the conditions that we're in. And I think it's a large part due to smart management. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Councilors of Perry. Councilboardelain?
Thank you. Thank you for the very detailed report. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to see, under the Human Services, the positive revenue there. What would that be generated from?
Okay, are you looking at the, the revenue?
You were saying we were under, right? The under budgets that we were?
Okay, are you talking about the revenue or the, or the expenditure side?
Just in general, just looking at that line, just wanting to, to see.
Okay, the Human Services being under budget by $23,000, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah.
On the expenditure side?
Correct.
Let me see if I can have, I'm not sure I have that level of detail with me.
Okay.
But I, I, I did not bring the specifics. I can get that information to you and, and either give it to the town manager, or email that to you.
Okay.
If you'd like to know the individual line items that came in under budget, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I just would like to see, because I think moving forward with upcoming budget, I mean, I'm, I'm thankful to see this. This is a snapshot, but, or for me, I would like to expand those numbers. So I have those in front of me to look at with the upcoming budget. It's good to kind of do the homework now on those. And outside agencies, and, you know, I think it's great, but I'd like to.
Excuse me?
I, I would like to just know where those revenues are being generated from.
Okay. And I will say that once the CAFR is finalized and released, and I'll be bringing that to the council, probably in January or February, there is a budget-to-actual statement in there that would give you probably some, a little bit more level of detail that you're looking for. But I can get this for you now for June.
Okay, perfect. And that will just give me, you know, a chance to kind of flip through each of these items here, and kind of looking at them for next year, and just seeing where those numbers fell. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Franco?
Kim, you tell us generally, overall, why the departments are under budget? Is it because of COVID issues that have happened, and they just maybe couldn't get some of the work done that they had planned to?
I think some of it is, could be COVID-related. I don't think that COVID impacted our budget for that March to June quarter quite like we had anticipated. I think there is, some of it is related to vacancies. I think we had quite a few vacancies this year. I didn't, I, sorry, I don't have the, that level of detail between operating and personal services. But I'm just trying to see here. I think Public Works was, was the largest one, but of the 694,000 that they returned. But I couldn't get you some other level of detail that I can provide for you to try to break that out a little bit more, to see if that would be helpful to you.
All right. So if you think, I mean, maybe even John Burt can jump in on some of this. But if you think some of this has to do with staffing levels?
There is a good chunk in Public Works, where they had quite a lot of openings for a significant amount of time.
Do you know?
Including like the, the director leaving and that type of thing. We had quite a lot of positions open there for a while.
And I think also, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, it applied, I think in OPDS, we've had, they've had a couple of openings up there that we've had to apply numerous times. I think the, the staffing and filling positions kind of goes in cycles. It's like, sometimes we get flooded with really good candidates, and then sometimes we just don't get any likely candidates. So it, it really is difficult to determine where the cycle is when we have these openings.
Right. And they're the higher-level professional positions that we've been hiring in those departments.
Right. So does it make everything even tougher during everything that we're going through to have these top-level positions open and being able to go forward?
It's not really, not that I've noticed. It's, it's just hard generally to get people, you know, getting qualified people. But no, I haven't noticed a big impact from COVID. And we do now have most of our positions filled.
Let's not add any positions. You're doing well without them, I say that way.
We're, we're got put off, though.
That was.
Franco, did you have follow-up?
Yeah, I was just sort of wondering, like, just how it was affecting the town with, I mean, because that's.
Yeah, well, you look at things like we had an engineer position open for every, there's, you know, those have an impact. There's a lot of projects that are behind now, and that might have related to some other savings in there, too, just because some projects were getting delayed without having engineers in place.
Right. That's what, I was just curious as to, I mean, it's a sort of a substantial number as, you know, how does that impact what's happening? So, how are we getting things done? Thank you.
We have Councilor Baumgartner and then Melendas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Cindy, as always, for your incredibly informative presentation. Now, quickly, on the issue of the fund balance applied, you know, for the purposes of the public, you know, I think, you know, every budget cycle, when we talk about fund balance, for some people, it can, you know, people's eyes can glaze over. And could, would you be able to explain, maybe, you know, provide a definition of fund balance and explain why Groton will be assigning $3.4 million of, or, I'm sorry, 3.4 million, the town will see a $3.4 million increase in unassigned fund balance?
When we put the budget together, we put, we have an adopted budget, and we have revenue that's coming in, that, all revenue coming in that does not include taxes. And the difference between the adopted budget and all other revenue is the money that has to come from taxes. So sometimes fund balance is applied so that it does, to mitigate a tax increase. So we, it, you can think of fund balance applied as almost like a revenue. So we put, we add some additional incoming revenue to reduce the amount of taxes that are required. Now, that is what we happened when we put together the 20 budget. We had anticipated that we were going to need the $1,095,000 to technically balance the budget, to keep the mill rate where we were comfortable it was. We needed to add a little bit to revenue. But ultimately, whatever happened throughout the year, be it vacancies, be it COVID, our expenditures were less than we had anticipated. And so that money automatically would say, we don't need that money, so we are going to give that back to the general fund. We're going to give that back to fund balance. And on the same side, we estimate revenues as the best that we can, using the best information we have from the departments, when they look at their budgets, from what we get from the state, what we anticipate from the federal governments. And this year, we had some that came in over what we had anticipated. And again, that's money that we don't need, so we're going to put it back into fund balance, which is kind of like our, as the state calls it, their rainy day fund. It's like the, it's a point in time when we talk about fund balance, but it's accumulation of years of comparing your revenues to your expenditures. So because the revenues came in over the 1.4, and expenditures are under 1.9, the sum of those two, which is the 3.4, we will add back to fund balance. In addition to the 1.9, that, the $1,095,000 that we had thought we were going to need, but we ultimately do not need because of the other funds that we are returning. Did that make any sense at all?
So would, and my math is absolutely wrong. In, in my head, I'm thinking then unassigned fund balance would increase by about 2.4 million, and I know I'm clearly wrong, and I'm wondering why, why that would be.
Okay, do you? Well, if you take the, the 1.4 and the 1.9 are both going back. And that's, that's the increase of the 3.4 that I have in my memo.
So when I. When I think of utilizing, what was, but so the budgeted amount was using 1.95, 1.095?
Yeah.
A million of fund balance, right? And so if, with that not being used, then with the additional, say, if you look at the expenditures that were less than budgeted, that's about 1.1, about 2, about a little less than 2 million? Wouldn't you then subtract that, what was budgeted from the use of the fund balance from that, and then kind of work forward? Or, maybe we can talk offline, but, but nonetheless.
I, I know the fund balance does get confusing when we budget it, but yeah, let me put something together and send it to you and see if it's a little bit clearer, and then we can distribute it to others, or have another conversation at a later date about, you know, how to, how to make it better, explain it to people. You know, it's one of those things that I know how it works, and, but to try to get it out there, to explain it to some, to others, it's, sometimes it's difficult.
Well, when you break it down, these numbers are certainly a testament to your, your hard work as, you know, our Finance Director, and, and certainly the leadership of our town, and, you know, in, in each respective department. So we appreciate it, appreciate, you know, the respective, you know, directors for, you know, being, you know, great stewards of tax dollars. And certainly, we welcome the additional revenue as well. So, you know, considering that, you know, we have a fund balance that is about a fifth of our operating budget, I, I think that is a serious accomplishment, considering there are many surrounding towns that would, you know, would, would do anything for that, for that kind of fund balance. So again, thank you, Cindy and John, and, and no further questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Melendas?
Yes, actually, I was, I was trying to get clarification on, on the chart, on, on the last page, specifically between the June 20 and the September 20 number. I think, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, is that September 20, calculating how much we were under budget and how much more we've sort of taxed more than we thought? And, and the June number is just taking into account one of those sides?
No, actually, what I'm trying to show there is when we set the mill rate in June, this is what we had anticipated was going to be the 1.5 million, excuse me. And I'm just trying to show the progression from now that when we have final numbers, where we thought we were going to be returning the 1.5 million, we're now returning the 3.4 million to fund balance.
Okay, so it's estimated and actual?
Yes. Because when we go to set them, when the budget's adopted and we go to set the mill rate, we always look at revenues and expenditures again in May, and that's the best estimates I have in time to say, okay, this is what we need, and this is what we have available to use for fund balance, and this is what we have to set the mill rate for the upcoming budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Council Obray?
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering, have you have, do you have any feeling as to how impacted we're going to be come with the January payments of taxes? I noticed that was down, you know, we didn't receive what we anticipated for the last payment schedule.
Right.
I'm kind of wondering how you think it might be this winter?
When, okay, when you say the last, are you referring to the June 30th?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we were under that $400,000, but we were actually over, we were still under budget, but we were under budget less than I had anticipated, excuse me, back in June. But actually, surprisingly, tax collections are pretty strong. And usually, the January payments or the bulk of those, well, we will have the supplemental motor vehicles that come out that will be billed. But most of those January payments, a lot of them will be from the mortgage companies, and they're from people who have escrowed their taxes. So as I said, we are working on the quarterly report through as of September. But taxes are, even with the COVID and even with the deferral, are in pretty good shape compared to last year.
Okay, I, I hope you're right.
I have, I have a lot of confidence and optimism.
Well, I do, too. And I, I think it, it's wonderful, but I also know how many people aren't making their payments. So the banks aren't going to have the monies to pay, to pay us automatically as they have in the past. So that's the part that concerns me. But we'll hope for the best.
Okay, thank you, Director Landry. We appreciate that, and we'll look forward to that information that was requested by the council. I do have to note that it is 10:01, and before we continue, I need consensus from the council to continue. And we have another item on the agenda here, and the people have been here from the very beginning, waiting patiently. So I'm hoping the council is in agreement to proceed with 2021-29. Is there any objection to proceeding to the last item? Very good. All right, so 2021-20-9, Sealy School Property Short Term Fixed Assessment Agreement. This started on page 42 in your packet, and I believe this is Councilor Franco, and I think there's something for you to read this time.
Yes. I make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the Short Term Fixed Assessment Agreement with the Donmar Residential LLC. I so move.
Second, Heat?
Moved by Franco, seconded by Heat. Mr. Reiner is here. Mr. Reiner and Mr. DeJoy is here. Thank you again for sticking with us another long night.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Also here with me tonight is Eric Callahan. He did a lot of work on this project with me, as long, as well as other town staff. So as we discussed it, I think the last council meeting, just some of the steps that we've taken thus far with Donmar, the last step for the council to take on the Sealy School with Donmar is the fixed assessment agreement that was contemplated in that option agreement that Donmar and the town had signed a number of. that was contemplated in that option agreement that Donmar and the town had signed, uh, a number of months back. This fixed assessment agreement covers the period of time, uh, really looking at while they are owning the property and when they are constructing the property. So this, uh, fixed assessment agreement goes into effect basically, uh, for the time period of once they pull a building permit, they will not be paying taxes on anything that they're constructing for a one-year period of time. During their time owning the property, uh, Donmar will be paying property taxes on the, the land itself, which today we're not getting any property taxes for that land. So we will be getting property taxes initially, once they do take ownership. Uh, once they finish their due diligence and clear the land, pull a building permit, then they will be, uh, that one-year period goes into effect. And, um, after that, they will be paying taxes on any constructed or partially constructed buildings or whenever they get a certificate of occupancy, whichever occurs first. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, either Eric or I could field them.
Thank you. Councilor Obrin.
Well, I think that myself, I'm feeling very comfortable with this because we've had a lot of conversations as we've gone along. John has kept us very informed on, um, how things have moved. Uh, these people have shown themselves to be, um, moving forward appropriately. And, uh, I, I would say that I think this is fine to go forward with. So I just want to speak in favor of it.
Thank you. Councilor Heat.
Thanks. Along with Councilor Obrin, I'm strongly in favor of, of this project and, um, this has been, this particular item has been expected. Uh, it was laid out early on that this would be happening, uh, is part of the, the process. So I'm strongly in favor.
Thank you, Councilor Heat. I support this as well. I'm not sure if any other counselors wish to voice, um, support or question. Seeing none. We will vote on 2021-20 Sealy School Property Short Term Fixed Assessment Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? I just want to do a quick count because there's, the pictures are moving. Nine, okay. Um, all those in favor, nine, opposed, zero, abstention, zero. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for sticking with us.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming and waiting so patiently.
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay. So that is all the new business. Review of agenda items. Mr. Burt, do you have anything you wanted to go over on the agenda items?
I have nothing.
Thank you. So then we are on to other business and this is item 7A 2020-35-3, 30-second Town Council Rules of Procedure Changes. This started on page 53, and I'm going to give the floor to Councilor Obrin to give us an update.
I'm going to ask tonight for a postponement on actually reviewing the final rules. We have been working diligently since our last meeting and we will be prepared, at the next appropriate meeting to have it out to you before the meeting. Uh, we took your, uh, suggestions from before when we talked. Uh, we've tried to slim it down, try to make it very easy to follow. Uh, but we do need your patience, uh, because we're not quite ready to present.
Um, Councilor Baumgartner.
Yes, um, and, um, just to piggyback off of, uh, Councilor Obrin, the Rules Committee has been meeting diligently over the last couple of weeks, um, to discuss, uh, the feedback that the, that several counselors provided at the, our last council meeting. Um, we're very appreciative of that feedback and, um, by no means, um, you know, is the, is our committee done soliciting feedback. So, you know, I, again, if, uh, there are any counselors who have any other last minute suggestions, you know, please don't be a stranger and send them our way. Um, but we did meet, uh, last week and this week, um, for several hours to really dig deep into the council, um, minutes. So, um, you know, happy to answer any questions counselors have, but again, um, you know, we, we did want to afford the council the opportunity to review, um, the adjustments we've made to the rules. Um, added to the last few meetings and we didn't want to, you know, uh, PR tonight before the council, um, and, um, you know, uh, ask you to, uh, adopt or approve those set of rules. We'd like you to, you know, take the time to consider, um, those rules.
Thank you. And then I will recognize Counselor Parker is a member of the Rules Committee. If you would also like to speak to, um, your work.
Just that with, I agree, concur with Counselor Obrin and Counselor Baumgartner. We're diligently working on this to take all the suggestions and your concerns into consideration and go through this very, very carefully. And I second her postponement because we just need a little more time.
Okay. I don't know that, um, Councilor Obrin made a motion yet.
No.
So if that was just a rhetorical second, um, I don't believe she has. Counselor Franco had her hand up, then I'll, I'll bring it back to Counselor Obrin. If Counselor Obrin, uh, would like to make a formal sec, uh, formal motion. Counselor Frank?
Yes, I, um, since our last meeting, there's been, um, some emails regarding, um, having unfinished business, um, added to our agenda as well. So I'd like to throw that in as well. And, um, I know you guys are working very hard on these and I'm sure the rules are not easy because there's so many ins and outs to everything. And Robert's Rules is quite a large book and has a lot of items in there. And it's not easy to just find one thing because if you find something, then you probably have to go on to three different, four different sections to can follow up on it for the full outlook of something. And I appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And, um, I would look forward to, um, the next revised edition and, um, that we can have another discussion on. Thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
Counselor Obrin, did you wish to make a formal motion to postpone?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone, uh, the, uh, final action of the Rules Committee.
Okay, we, um, can you specify a date, please? Would you like it to be the next COW?
Yeah.
So that would be, Mr. Burt, I believe that's November 10th, correct?
He went to bed.
That is correct.
November, so, um, I'm going to repeat your, your motion, Counselor Obrin. Counselor Obrin would like to postpone, um, item 2020-35-3 until November 10th COW. Is that correct, Counselor Obrin?
Yes, thank you.
Moved by Obrin, seconded by Zepari. And I see no discussion, so we will vote. Uh, Councilor Bordelain, do you have discussion?
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm not sure if it can be done. I'm just thinking, um, you know, since it's, and when you're talking rules, it's important that, you know, when they come forward, that we have time to really deliberate on them. And, uh, uh, just suggestion, and it doesn't have to happen, um, but maybe we chunk it on, you know, different nights as we go through it to really, um, versus like presenting the whole package, so to speak, and maybe present it. But, um, maybe decide like what sections, you know, on that given night, you know, because it can be, it can be tiresome because it's a lot, you know, a lot of things to go through. And, and then that way, if there's corrections from that point again, then there's time to kind of, um, make corrections and then move to the next section, you know, like almost like a first and second or rewrite if needed. Um, I don't know, just thought.
We're done.
All right. So, um, we have a motion on the floor to postpone to the, um, November 10th COW, item 2020-35-3.
So I wasn't joking when I was just saying it would be, and I was saying it very seriously with all respect, that in real, that it would, it would be helpful to rule it out in maybe sections so it's easier to digest, but that was not a joke. I, oh, discredit to the right. It's just, it would be easier to work through it, you know, uh, in a fashion which, you know, would probably go a lot quicker. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might.
Counselor Obrin.
I was just laughing at my own frustration, not you, Counselor Bordelain. I'm very sorry. It's just, it, it's, it's amazing the hours we've actually had to put into this. But maybe, uh, what we could do is, uh, prior to that meeting is put out what we have and have everybody have time to, you know, to review it. And then when we meet, we would probably be able to do it in a much shorter time.
Um, I think that
It will go out in the packet for the, for the COW agenda. So your, your minutes will go out in draft form when the agenda goes out. So everybody will have a chance to review it prior to the meeting.
Right. I just, what I'm just saying is, is if, if there's some areas that, you know, have, you know, the same response as last time, I was just, you know, trying to think of a remedy to that situation. And sometimes in rewrites of other rules and other things I've done, sometimes we have to chunk it up and, and break it up into two sessions even to just make the expectation. Well, if it's three pages, well, we're only going to do one and a half and we'll get the other one the next time because it can be a very encumbersome and a lot of, you know, discussion. And anyway, that's all, but thank you.
Um, so Counselor Obrin, before, before I call the vote, please, when is your next meeting that way? If counselors wish to attend, um, the meeting so they could hear the deliberations and ask their questions during the Rules Committee meeting, they might be able to. Do you have it set?
Thursday at 5:30.
Thank you. So Thursday at 5:30 will be the next meeting of the Rules Committee that, um, people are welcome to tune in and, and, um, hear the deliberation and ask questions about the various, um, items up for discussion. Counselor Heat's cat is visiting us again this evening.
The cat wants to talk.
Counselor Franco.
Can we vote?
So when on Thursday.
Counselor Zepari.
Sorry.
Counselor Frank has her hand up and I recognized her.
On Thursday at the Rules Committee, are, are counselors, if we are in attendance and not on the Rules Committee, are we allowed to ask questions or, or in, put in our input?
Sure.
Agree, Madam Mayor, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. All right. I'm going to call for a vote on, one more time, 2020-35-3, 30-second Town, oh, no, we're not voting on that. Uh, we are voting on postponing 2020-35-3 until the November 10th COW, as per Obrin and Zepari. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Any abstentions? So moved unanimously.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hold, hold on. Moved by Parker, seconded by Zepari. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Nine in favors, zero opposed, zero abstentions. We are adjourned at 10:16 PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. If I had a gavel, I'd bang a gavel.